Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Madera.
Here.
Councilmember Frank.
Here.
Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Councilmember Hughesman.
Here.
Councilmember Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Huardiola.
Present.
Mayor Protem Teeter.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, everyone's here tonight except for Mayor Protem Teeter. I'm open for a motion to excuse his absence. Mr. Madera.
Motion to excuse Mayor Protem Teeter's absence.
Thank you. Mr. Hughesman.
Second that motion.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right. First item on the agenda is an executive session, but I've had a request to amend the agenda to put citizen communication first because some folks showed up thinking that our council member, our council meeting was supposed to start at six and we don't want to delay their evening any more than we have to. So...
Mayor Ford?
Yes, sir.
If you are amending the agenda, we also have a gentleman here for a proclamation this evening, so you may want to consider proceeding with that first.
I don't disagree. So, how about this? Is there a motion to amend the agenda to allow for the presentation of proclamation followed by the citizen communication prior to our executive session? Mr. Hughesman.
So moved.
Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. The executive session will be moved down below the others. So, to keep in pace, we need to do the pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask all the residents to please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Now let's get into the proclamation. We have a proclamation tonight recognizing a special person in our community. I'm glad that he was able to make it in tonight, and I want to thank Phil and Glenn and all the folks that have helped to bring to light all the things that Mr. Sater has done. Really proud to have been able to meet him during National Donut Day the other day at the Tasty Donut Store because I got to visit with him for a little while and get to learn a little bit about who someone is. And I felt that if we have somebody in our community that's turning 100 years old, that they should be recognized. So, I'm glad he's here tonight. Let's get on with the proclamation. Will City Attorney please read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Whereas George Cedar Jr. was born on June 30, 1918, in Longmont, Colorado, and will be celebrating his 100th birthday this month; and whereas George has been married to Ann Cedar for 54 years, where they have enjoyed traveling and visiting their grandchildren; and whereas George has been blessed with two children, four grandchildren, seven great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren; and whereas George has worked as a farmer, a self-employed construction worker, and a truck driver for Navajo Trucking Company for 22 years, where he received many safe driving awards and retired in 1985 at the age of 67; and whereas George is a World War II veteran, where he served in the Army from 1942 to 1945 and was stationed in England, France, and Belgium; George served as a sergeant in the 353rd Headquarters Detachment Fighter Group; George received the Good Conduct Medal and the European African Middle Eastern Service Medal for his service; and whereas George now spends his time going to daylight donuts to drink coffee and eat donuts with his friends and fishing. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City recognizes George Cedar Jr. on his 100th birthday and declares June 30, 2018, as George Cedar Jr. Day in Commerce City, Colorado, and wishes him many more happy years of healthy life and leisure.
Thank you. The proclamation's been read. Is there a motion? Mr. Hughesman.
Motion to approve the proclamation recognizing Mr. Sater on his 100th birthday.
Mr. Huardiola.
Second the motion.
A motion is second to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. June 30th will be George Sater Day in Commerce City. A few things I think that are important. When I was talking to Mr. Sater at the donut shop that day, he told me that one of the things that he wishes wouldn't have been a problem back many, many years ago, probably before I was even born. His kids said, he said that the bus would stop and pick up the kids for school, but they'd only pick the kids up on the side of the street opposite of where he lived. So, he had a problem with the school busing issues, and I would ask to see if 27J would give Mr. Sater an apology for not picking his kids up for school. But when you have somebody that fought in World War II, fought for our country, and has been around to see things change for 100 years, I want to make sure we give credit to him. Normally, I would have had the person in question standing at the podium, but I didn't want to make George have to get up there and stand for this amount of time. I would like to open it up for anybody that would like to come up and say a few words about George if they want to at this time. I know Glenn and Phil have been helping a lot with putting this together. Do you guys either one of you have anything you want to add? Now's a great time to do it.
I guess I need to make a few comments here. I've known George a long time, and you get to know somebody when you visit with him quite a bit. And the interesting thing about George, his humor. He can come up, remembers things, and he comes up with some of the darnedest stories that make you really laugh. So, that part, and he's sharp, a little hard hearing, but fun to be around.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If not, then I would invite the city council to join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to George. I think it's fitting.
On three.
On three.
One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear George. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Yep. If council wants to come down and greet Mr. Sater, and I'll give him his proclamation.
Just hang in there. You're getting a little tired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, now we'll get into citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is a time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. City council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before city council. Please reserve those comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. And thank you. Alright. First on the list is our judge, Dave Juarez. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor of City Council. David Quaddus, the address that I'm using, I'm appearing in my official capacity of 788-7 East 60th Avenue. As the city council may be aware, I refrain from having any direct input on the passage of legislation, but my understanding that there's an issue on the agenda for tonight, that I simply wanted to raise a couple of concerns about that go beyond just affecting this legislation. It's something for the city council to consider in all legislation that they pass that affects the city and the ordinances that you direct me to enforce in the city. My understanding is that the city council is considering imposing a mandatory minimum fine, and the proposal includes information that I would have no discretion to suspend any portion of the fine for any of the violations that occur. Whenever legislative body passes mandatory minimum fines, they're in essence tying the hands of the judicial officers that are called upon to apply those ordinances and laws to the citizens that appear in front of them. The statutory authority with regard to the powers of municipal judges is contained in 1310, 113, sub-paragraph 2. It allows for suspended jail or fines regardless of any other law to the contrary that municipalities pass. So, if the court sets a mandatory minimum fine and indicates that it's not suspended or can't be suspended by the judge, that runs contrary to the state law that empowers municipal ordinances and judges to impose fines and court costs. So, I always caution the city to try to be as consistent with state law as possible. The particular ordinance that the city is considering under state law has an equivalent, and that equivalent is treated under state law as a class III misdemeanor with a fine range of from $50 to $750 and up to six months in jail. My understanding is, just a quick perusal of the proposed legislation, is that there's an increased mandatory minimum fine of a second offense of $1,000. That would go beyond the equivalent state law maximum of $750. In essence, whatever the city council passes, I'm going to apply. I just try to caution the city council when looking at this type of ordinance, when considering, in essence, a mandatory sentence of some type, the court has no oblig-, I mean, my only obligation is to do what you tell me, but I will be pressured in the sense that, on the one hand, I'm empowered by state law, and on the other hand, I'm tied, my hands are being tied by the city council. I would ask for some type of consistency there before you impose anything as a mandatory minimum fine or jail sentence in any legislation and remove my ability to exercise my discretion on any case. I think that's my three minutes.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Bates.
My name is Gail Bates. I live at 86, 96 Willow Street in Commerce City, which is Irondale. So, I'm here to talk about Irondale. Do you want to wait till you get into the Irondale part, or...
Well, if this pertains to the Irondale plan, I would, Mr. Attorney?
There will be a public hearing on the plan.
I know.
When it is presented, so that would be the appropriate time to take testimony on it.
Right. Yeah, so it would be appropriate at the time we hear the testimony during the public hearing would be, would be the part where we would want you to speak, yes.
And when is...
You know, it's later in the agenda.
Okay.
I hate to have you wait any longer though, because I know there were some frustrations about scheduling and what was perceived. The Irondale plan is, I'm looking for it here.
It's at 8 o'clock supposedly. I mean, I can wait as far as that goes.
Yes, 8 p.m.
I can wait as far as that goes.
Alright, as long as you're okay with that, that's when the public hearing will be open and that's the appropriate time to speak on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chris and Christopher Sevens?
Severns.
Sevens, thank you.
My name is Chris Severns.
It's alright, you can come up. We won't bite.
This is my son, Christopher Severns. I live at 9812 Chambers Drive in Commerce City. I'm here to talk about the issue with, our new rec centers lacking in the pool area very badly. We, there's a lot of systems that made comments on next door, and the comments we received back from Mr. Hughesman were a little brash, and it didn't really address the concerns that have been brought up. Some of the issues are Prairie View High School was told that they would have a swimming facility to practice in. Instead, they still have to go up to Brighton and practice with their rivals. The surrounding communities have the standard amenities of a therapy pool, or hot tub, sauna, and steam room. We don't have anything close to that at either of our rec centers. Our, the survey results from, and I filled out one of the surveys for this new rec center, listed in order what was important to people. The number one thing was an indoor pool area. The number five thing was a lap pool that people could use. The lap pool's not a standard length, it's shorter. So, people that use their watches to do a 25-meter lap, they can't do it because we built a pool that was substandard. There is no therapy pool. One of the things that I, my biggest issues with our old rec center was, there's no hot tub, there's no therapy pool. We built a brand-new facility that should be state-of-the-art, and we lack substantially in these areas. The last thing that was on the survey was a 300-person community room. Guess what? I got put into the rec center. A 300-person community room. We have high schools, middle schools, and elementaries with gymnasiums and cafeterias that meetings can be held in that really didn't need to be done at the rec center at this time. And my son would like to talk about one of the issues he's already noticed at the pool itself.
So, the slide, it's supposed to have the music playing when you go down. It's always broke. Like, the, two days after it opened, it was broke. I never got the music that I was chose.
What's happening is when the kids go down the slide, somebody is changing the music. So, every time he goes down, he has to listen to Jaws on the slide. That's not real fun for little kids. They put in a state-of-the-art gymnastics room. We have a state-of-the-art gymnastics at Prairie View High School. I'm just kind of confused on why things happen the way they happen with this community center. And it doesn't seem, not sure where to go at this point. This is where Mr. Hughesman suggested they come, and so that's what I'm here for tonight.
Well, thank you for coming in and bringing to our attention some of your concerns. I want to allow the council, if anyone has any comments that they can make, and then I will also comment. Councilwoman Elliott?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. And these are all valid concerns, and I appreciate you taking the time to come in this evening. I know that this council, I want the four members that were on this council previously, we had so many discussions as far as what amenities that we could fit within our budget and what was the need for the area. So, first I'll touch on the gymnastics or the gymnasium. We have a pretty large program here at our current rec center at Eagle Point, and it was a matter of expanding that program because it's so popular. And so, although there is a state-of-the-art gymnastics gymnasium at Prairie View, we don't always have access to those facilities to accommodate our programming. Secondly, as far as the pool itself, we, we talked about this, and while we look at it now and think, well, okay, maybe it is a bit smaller than what we had envisioned, but we also had to have that hard talk of what is it that we could actually put in place for the residents and what we had to take away. Now, I know that I was one of, one of nine that had mentioned, we have to look at the future, not just necessarily the present. We have to look five, 10, 15, 20 years from now to where we can expand. Our vision, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would be able to build an outdoor pool adjacent to that open area because we're finding that problem now with our current rec center at Eagle Point. And so, you give and take, and that's just, that's just discussions that go on, and we try to figure out what's the best for our residents within our budget. As far as the community room, I know there's a need for some type of venue space because there's nothing between this side of 96th Avenue and up through Brighton. And I know that we had looked at the survey and it actually scored pretty high, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe with what information you have, I'm not saying that it's incorrect, but maybe it's different than what we've seen. And one of our council members that is no longer on council, Councilwoman JD Carson, was a strong proponent in that because there were so many different activities that we, we could see in that, in that space. Not just necessarily meeting space, but it would, it would give educational opportunities. We have Kid Spotlight Theater that utilizes that stage. We have other organizations that would like to be able to house other programs, and then of course culinary classes as well. So, those are the things I wanted to touch on. I'll leave to my colleagues to chime in, but those are the things I at least wanted to address with you. Also, I will tell you that the steam room, which I'm really proud of, we do have the steam room at the current rec center, and that was one thing that had to fight to keep because it was actually not in the plans in moving forward. And so, knowing the popularity of that, I mean, that could be something, I don't want to make any promises because I won't be on council as of next year, but those are definitely in, up for discussion as far as expansion, if that's what the public would like to see, you know, moving forward. I mean, that's definitely up for discussion with future council. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Thank you for coming down and addressing this. And I understand your concerns, and I won't repeat what Councilwoman Elliott has addressed, but I tell you, as far as the community room, we're looking for arts and culture center as well. We don't have that. And most likely, we had to go up to Brighton Armory in order to attend any camp that was around cultural, cultural and arts. And so, that's what brought that on. That was the catalyst to have the, as far as the meeting room. And as far as size, we want to make sure we can accommodate future growth. That's why it's 300 rooms instead of just 100. When you have the space and opportunity to add on, you might as well start out with their certain size, so at least you accommodate today's plus the future. The pool, we've had several discussions about the pool, round and round about that. I mean, from anywhere, from the length of the size as far as lap pool, as far as lazy river and activity area, I understand about that, you know, should have been, you know, much bigger there. Different water temperatures when it comes to lap pool temperature versus rec, rec temperature, whether or not to have a separate wall to separate. I mean, we had a lot of discussions about the pool. I can tell you, I went to bat. There's nine of us, so we had to come down to some sort of consensus that was, that we all agree on, and that was my sore spot. But we do have a new rec center. We also have the capability to add a pool outside because as they're building this recreation center, they also put the mechanics in the ground. So, right now, the mechanics are already in the ground in order to exercise the outdoor pool. So, that's, so that's a gimme. It's just a matter of funding to make sure with the 1% sales tax, when it's appropriate, we'll go ahead and start those talks about the outdoor pool. The, our gymnastics room, there was a lot of talk about having more advanced when it comes to that type of service. So, that's why that was put in. I mean, it's, like you see, it's, it's a very attractive facility. The gymnasium, and the running track, all those amenities, we thought about in making them much bigger to accommodate the space. So, addition to that, there's, there's room for growth, and it's just, it's just a matter, we had a long, long laundry list of, of things that we wanted, more like a Christmas list and, and the need. So, a few things we got off one end and a few of the others. So, I, I appreciate you coming down and addressing that. And I've had a lot of people make, you know, make comments about their rec center and how wonderful it is to have a facility like that because we didn't have one in the north and they had to travel outside, outside the area. On the other hand, you know, sometimes we just don't get it right, and this time we did when it came to the pool. So, I appreciate you addressing concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. I would, number one, I want to thank you for coming in. And if there's a problem with the slide and the music and how that all lays out, I'd direct the city manager to get the staff to fix it so that it's...
and how wonderful it is to have a facility like that because we didn't have one in the north and they had to travel outside, outside the area. On the other hand, you know, sometimes we just don't get it right, and this time we did when it came to the pool. So I appreciate you addressing concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. I would, number one, I want to thank you for coming in. And if there's a problem with the slide and the music and how that all lays out, I'd direct the city manager to get the staff to fix it so that it's working properly. It's a brand-new facility. We want everybody to enjoy it being brand-new. We did expand that rec center from what was originally about 60 some thou, 60 some thousand square feet? 80? 80,000 square feet to over 100,000 square feet. And it was a lot of additional dollars because we wanted to make sure we created and built a very nice facility for people. Now, people that, in our community that like gymnastics, they're going to be ecstatic. You know, the, the people that want a hot tub, not so much because you, you, we couldn't include everything. And I think Mr. Douglas is right. He went to bat and said, "Well, we got to expand the pool because there's no room for people to swim laps." So there were lanes added to that pool. Now, it's, maybe they're short. It's not significant if you're running off your watch and you're used to an Olympic-sized pool. But we had that Olympic-sized pool configuration at Eagle Point at the old rec center. And so we wanted to make sure we had a variety of opportunities for the residents and not just lap pools within our community. So the new rec center, the, the Eagle Point rec center redevelopment will be done this, this winter. And it will have the lap pools available. It will have the therapy pool. It will have a lot of, of things. Bracket ball that the other rec center doesn't have. But the other rec center has a lot of amenities that Eagle Point doesn't have. So we wanted to be able to create more opportunity and not duplicate everything so that we had two exact same rec centers. So we could afford for our residents to have more options with what they do have. I'm sorry we didn't get everybody's need taken care of. One of the things I get, complained to me about a lot is tennis courts. And I know you brought up the schools, and I know the schools have big gymnasiums. I know that they have facilities for gymnastics and they have, most schools have swimming pools. Prairie View does not have a swimming pool. However, those facilities are for, that's a separate government, and yes, we try to share amenities when it comes to ball fields and things of that nature. But we always don't have opportunities for our public to be able to go in and utilize the equipment and the facilities at schools. So they're working on their teams for the school district and, and giving opportunity for them. We have, have programs through the city that are above and beyond what the school offers, and so we have facilities too. We try not to duplicate when we don't have to. We used to have a pool here, it was at the Crow Fieldhouse at the old Adam City High School. That was the only swimming pool this community had when I was a kid. And so you want to go swim and you had to go down to the, to the high school swimming pool. That went away. We finally, I guess I was probably about 16 when the rec center was built. I'm proud that we're redoing it, and I'm glad we're keeping the, the steam room and other things. But we want to create an environment for all of our residents. And so as much of a great facility it is, I'm sorry it doesn't create and have all the amenities for every resident in Commerce City, but as 60,000 in population, we did try to do our best to create a great facility for everybody to be able to use. I'm sorry about your disappointment. We will get the slide fixed. And we look forward to having you come and enjoy some of the amenities that Eagle Point will have when they open in December. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that came here to speak during citizen communication that did not get a chance to sign up on the list? Seeing none, we will move on in our agenda. Now we are to portion in our agenda to go into executive session. I need a motion, a second, to enter into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, Parents 4, Parents E. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations concerning incentives for a potential economic development project within the city. Mr. Douglas?
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Wardiola?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to go into executive ser, executive session for the reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I have one nay for the record. With that said, motion is approved. We are in executive session. For the folks in the audience, our intent is to only be in there 10 to 15 minutes. I don't see what we're doing, has to take much longer than that. So we'll be right back with you. Please be patient. Thank you.
Tiki Bar.
Tiki Bar?
Right there on the, you know, where the three point eight eight acres are.
By Cross Tiki Sub?
No, um, Crossing School.
Lizard's School.
Second grade?
Which school?
No, Lizard's School.
Oh, okay.
You know where the horses are?
Right by your house.
At that three point eight eight acres we're selling, they're talking about buying it and turning around and putting it in.
Yeah, right.
That's where they talk to me.
That's a set on restaurant.
But, to my opinion again, why do we have to go into executive session? Thank you all for being patient, um, we are out of our executive session. But I'm compelled since we made an adjustment in our agenda, um, to ask if anybody came in while we were in executive session with the desires to speak during citizen communication, um, raise your hand if so. All right, seeing none, then we'll move forward with our agenda. I just wanted not to, um, stop somebody that, that came in, uh, that had the time, right? We, uh, next have the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are four items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none? I'm open for a motion on the consent agenda. Mr. Hughesman?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as posted.
Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the titles?
Resolution twenty eighteen dash five zero, resolution approving grant of drainage easement to Shuck Communities, Inc. Resolution twenty eighteen dash five one, resolution approving grant of a drainage easement to Big Black Dog LLC. Resolution twenty eighteen dash five three, resolution approving second amendment to professional services agreement with Atkins North America, Inc. For the Colorado Boulevard and Seventy Second Avenue Railline Stationery Improvements Project. Resolution twenty eighteen dash five four, resolution authorizing the Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation District to enter city-owned properties to perform land surveys, utility locates, and limited excavations.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Titles have been read, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Okay, he's trying, it's not working. You want to reset it? It's not working for Mr. Hughesman. All right, now if everybody will try to vote again. For the record, consent agenda is approved unanimously, one excused absence. Next item on the agenda is, uh, public hearings. There are two public hearings tonight. I want to remind the council to use the public hearing portion to ask questions, but wait until the public hearing is closed to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. We start with SAP zero zero five dash one eight. The first public hearing tonight is on the Irondale Area Neighborhood Infrastructure Plan. I'm going to open the public hearing and invite staff forward to give their presentation.
All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. First item for public hearings tonight is SAP zero zero five dash eighteen. It's a sub-area plan for the Irondale neighborhood. The purpose of a sub-area plan is to create a vision for a neighborhood. It's kind of a specialized comprehensive plan, and it's going to spell out the steps and actions that the city needs to take in order to help Irondale reach its goal. So why did we pick Irondale for a sub-area plan? Irondale is one of Commerce City's original communities. It was plotted as a residential community for the Kibler Stove Works factory. Um, the, unfortunately, the factory closed after only two years, and with the development of the surrounding highways and railroad, it largely had industrial development since the nineteen seventies. Irondale has quite a number of challenges, which is one of the reasons why it was selected. Um, there's an incomplete and unimproved street network, as well as some drainage concerns. So I'm here tonight to introduce our consultant, Ayers and Associates, who's going to tell you about the plan. But before I do, I want to let you know that Planning Commission considered this sub-area plan on June fifth and voted unanimously to recommend that city council adopt the Irondale Neighborhood and Infrastructure Plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt Ashby from Ayers Associates, and he'll tell you about the specifics within the neighborhood plan.
Thank you, Jenny, and Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for, uh, having us here today to talk about the Irondale Plan. Uh, today's focus, we want to give you a quick background, uh, to build upon the conversations that we've had over the preceding months regarding the Irondale Plan. Uh, we'll provide you with a little bit of background on the overall project, uh, the plan format, as well as the future land use, uh, that's recommended in the plan, as well as some of the recommended, uh, improvements that the plan includes. We did a, a number of research and background, uh, studies to identify current conditions within the Irondale neighborhood. That was our first step, um, and ultimately resulted in identifying two different scenarios to weigh different options of how the neighborhood could develop in the future. So, uh, option one was the current vision plan, and that more closely reflects the current comprehensive plan's land use recommendations, and that includes, um, two primary residential pockets within the neighborhood. The second option that was considered was the industrial transition option, which acknowledges the fact that, uh, there may be additional industrial pressures in the neighborhood, uh, that could, uh, present, uh, a changing land use pattern, uh, for the neighborhood. So both of these options were analyzed as to their impacts on different organizations, city entities, maintenance requirements, as well as being presented to, uh, the citizens at large for feedback. Ultimately, from the, uh, responses that we received and the analysis, the future land use map, uh, that is before you is the recommended land use map, and ultimately, the primary change, uh, again, is that the secondary residential pocket down near Eighty Second and Rosemary, uh, has been identified to transition more towards industrial, uh, as future industrial growth happens in the neighborhood. The northeast corner of the neighborhood is recommended to, uh, stay similar to what it is today. Uh, it is currently zoned agricultural, uh, but we've recommended that small-scale and light industrial, uh, be allowed to transition as a buffer into the general industrial, uh, which is indicated by the purple on the map. Uh, the other two components of the, uh, land use plan include, uh, the concept that Rosemary becomes a commercial and industrial mixed-use corridor, and that Eightieth Avenue remains primarily commercial in nature, uh, as that is the area that, uh, appears to be the most likely to have successful commercial uses. Now, the, uh, results of this plan, uh, will not necessarily change anything on the ground today, um, but, uh, ultimately will impact future, uh, changes to the neighborhood. So, uh, in considering, uh, somebody who might have an idea to change the use of their property, uh, the first would be that they would have an idea of what that new use might be. Uh, the second step would be to consult staff, as well as the Irondale Plan, to identify what the future land use, uh, is for their area of the neighborhood. And then third, a zone change request, uh, may be necessary for city council to approve and consider, uh, that new use. So, again, ultimately, this does not change, uh, the uses on the ground today, but influences how those uses change in the future. The infrastructure side, uh, of the capital improvements has been divided into two different categories, both quick wins, as well as long hauls. And the idea here was to provide, uh, staff with the ability to identify projects that could happen in a relatively short order, uh, with relatively few resources. And that being, uh, important to, uh, make sure that there is the, uh, opportunity to demonstrate, uh, an active engagement with the neighborhood. Uh, we've also identified that there are some long-haul projects out in this neighborhood, uh, that will require a longer time horizon for completion, uh, as well as funding sources and possible intergovernmental collaboration to complete. Additionally, um, we've identified different types of projects that are high-impact. Uh, we identified high-local impact improvements, uh, possibly including ulster and regional detention that would have a major impact on the local neighborhood. But there is also impacts, uh, to infrastructure that would have a regional impact, and those would include things like widening of Eighty Eighth and Rosemary, which accommodate, uh, quite a flow of commuter traffic through the neighborhood. All of the recommended improvements are included in the capital improvement, or in this, uh, plan map that includes an overview of the capital improvements. Um, they are identified by letter, uh, within the plan, and each of these improvements is called out with a relative, uh, cost factor, uh, to be able to help in prioritizing and, um, moving forward with these projects. Uh, we have not prioritized the projects, but would rather leave that to your capital improvement plan process to create, uh, that list of projects moving forward. Uh, additionally, we looked at the, uh, detention alternatives and, um, essentially came up with a combined alternative. Uh, the regional detention is the preferred approach, uh, due to its, uh, greater efficiency. However, uh, financial considerations, um, limit the ability for, uh, the city to move forward with the regional detention on an aggressive schedule. Uh, so individual onsite detention will be, uh, the interim alternative that allows for development to occur in the neighborhood, um, while the city still, uh, looks at and pursues, uh, the possibility of regional detention as funding sources become available. To enable this, uh, sort of two-pronged process to move forward, we have included the conceptual stormwater basins within the Irondale Plan, and so that, uh, should you be able to secure land for, um, one of the regional detention basins, you can build out that regional basin while still, uh, enabling the individual onsite to move forward in other areas of the neighborhood. And very specifically, the point of this approach is to allow development to be able to continue over time and not restrict a property owner who might own one of these sites. So funding considerations were included, uh, to provide you with an outline of different means of which the, uh, large list of improvements could be made. Um, these include the CIPP, Capital Improvement Preservation Plan, and typical projects that would be, uh, funded in this way include the widening of Eighty Eighth. A special improvement district, uh, would be more for localized improvements. So this would be local street improvements or sidewalk improvements that would be assessed to the local property owner that that improvement benefits. Uh, tax increment financing, uh, is certainly an option, as well as new investment takes place in the neighborhood, and this could include the regional detention infrastructure development, as well as, uh, development impact fees, which take more of a regional, uh, approach to development, uh, impacts, and these could be things like intersection improvements. And finally, we do have some recommendations for grants, uh, that could be pursued for this area, and an example of that is the Brownfield Grant, which would help with property assessments and additional planning work. So next steps, uh, second reading is anticipated July second of twenty eighteen. And to clarify a question that was asked during Planning Commission, uh, the question was, how do the projects get prioritized as far as the infrastructure, uh, improvement plan? And essentially, city staff would work, uh, with the KIPCAC, uh, committee, uh, that is the Citizens Advisory Committee Regarding Infrastructure Improvements, to help to prioritize the recommended projects moving forward into your capital improvement plan. So with that, uh, I would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Ms. Council, I have any questions from the presentation?
Your light's not on.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. On this ledger about, uh, our legend as far as, uh, the drainage and the detention facilities, and it shows storm drain, uh, let's see what page that is. It's on the map. It shows the layout for the drainage basins. Is, uh, proposal to have the storm drain, but traveled down Ninety-Six and then traveled down Willow, over, over and under, um, Highway Two onto the arsenal, is that right?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and defer to my colleague, uh, Dale Matheson is here. Uh, he's been primarily involved in the drainage, uh, analysis, and so I would, uh, ask him to come up to address that question.
First, I don't, I don't think it's Ninety-Six, it's, uh, um, where you're seeing on your map, the blue off to the right of Highway Two, would be where First Creek comes through and cuts across there, and comes into the Irondale neighborhood at the tracks.
This right here?
Right?
That's the drainage.
That's right.
Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, can you explain to us?
Sure. Thank you, uh, my name is Dale Matheson, uh, and I was involved in looking at the utilities and drainage out here. So, uh, your question is about the, it's a gray,
Yeah.
storm sewer. That was a, the alignment of that was determined through a master plan done, uh, prior for, uh, urban drainage. And, yeah, so that is a, I believe it's a sixty-inch diameter, conceptually sized storm drain line that would run up Eighty-Eighth and down Willow, and yes, cross under Highway Two, connecting to, um, that's a proposed, uh, detention facility on the, the Wildlife Refuge Site.
Okay, so that road would have to be taken out to, I mean, not taken out, but just in order for it to have that six-inch pipe come through, it's going to be in the center of the road, not on the properties, right?
Correct, correct. I believe that the alignment was chosen, my understanding is, is following the roadway alignments. Now, I'm, I can't speak to specifics, but I'm, because it was a master plan level, I believe they did not look into some of the details of,
Okay, I apologize, I said, uh, Ninety-Six, but that's Eighty-Eighth. Yeah, sorry.
Sure. Sure.
That answer your question, Mr. Douglas? Any other questions for the presenters this evening? Seeing none, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure we had clarity on that question and answer. So, Dale, could you answer which direction that proposed, or storm sewer will drain?
Sure. The proposed storm sewer would drain from the Rocky Mountain Arsenal to the west and eventually out to the South Platte River.
Everything in our community drains to the northwest, so that would follow with those flows.
Correct.
Is there going to be a pump station there, or is that just going to be a gravity flow from the?
This was all gravity flow design, correct.
I have a question about that same drainage basin. Knowing that the refuge has the railroad berm, does that significantly change if they take out that railroad berm, because that has acted as a dam in previous storms and would increase flows? So, I want to make sure that things are designed properly if the refuge, which is the federal government, determines they no longer want that railroad bed there that is blocking that water, which would create more flows instead of a retention scenario on the refuge?
Yes, my understanding is that that railroad does provide significant detention, I guess you could say. It stops water from continuing to flow across into the neighborhood.
But I'm, so what I'm asking is, is our plans show that that line at sixteen inches is significant if the federal government removes the railroad bed that is acting as detention on the refuge?
Yes, it is significant. And all of the detention, this just shows one of the detention facilities upstream of this neighborhood in the refuge. But there is the, if you look at the urban drainage master plan, there's quite a few detention areas and retention ponds.
There's another major one up towards Ninety-Sixth, but this one in particular is where the railroad has held it back in the past.
Correct.
All right, Mr. Hughesman?
Thank you. Looking at the map you showed as far as the future use plan, I didn't see a lot of residential on there. In fact, I didn't see any. But whenever I look at the current statistics there, we have approximately eight hundred and sixteen people, eight hundred and twenty-one people living in Irondale. Their median household income significantly less than the average of Commerce City, their poverty rate significantly higher, their unemployment rate a little bit less, their median gross rent significantly less than what Commerce City is. So, how does moving forward with this plan affect the residents in that community and displace those residents and force them to relocate to an area that has significantly higher cost of living, significantly higher rent?
Mayor, to answer that question, I think one of the things that comes to my mind is a story that we heard from a property owner that lives along the second residential area closer to Eighty-Second. They have owned property in that vicinity for many, many years. And the question that the gentleman asked me was, should I invest in my property? Should I continue investing? Or is there going to be change in the neighborhood? Do we anticipate that change? And should I look at transitioning and changing to a different use? And ultimately, what this land use plan provides is a snapshot of what we anticipate that the future market conditions will be in essentially adding additional industrial development to this neighborhood. There's no doubt that there is industrial pressure in adding development here, and certainly that's going to put pressure on those residential areas. The one area to the northeast which was identified to essentially continue on into the future as a residential area is currently zoned as agricultural. And ultimately, residential uses are allowed within an agricultural area. So, to try and balance out the prevailing market pressures that would seek to change areas that are adjacent to railroads to more industrial uses with the concerns of the existing residential that's in the neighborhood, we tried to balance that out as best we could and identified that it made logical sense for the area around Eighty-Second and Rosemary to be called out as transitioning to industrial while looking to preserve that northeast corner of the neighborhood as more residential.
Right, so I get that there's a need for industrial space, but I think everybody would also agree there's a need for affordable housing space. This community, this neighborhood, provides an opportunity for people to live in our community at significantly less rent, even more so, even less than what the affordable housing being built on One Hundred and Fourth offers. And yet, we're talking about implementing a plan that could potentially push them out of their homes and put them into either being homeless or behaving in another situation that we don't want to. So, my question is, how are we going to safeguard the people who are living there while implementing a plan that takes us into the future?
Mr. Mayor, I don't necessarily have an answer to that question.
I think I have something that can help. Mr. Hughesman, this would just be a long-range, long-range plan. This isn't changing the zoning of those properties. This would be if you had a house there, it was affordable, and that's where you wanted to stay, just like the scenario that he had mentioned, they would not be considered a non-conforming, a legal non-conforming use. They would be able to stay there and be residential until at which time they chose to change the use of their property. So, it would not be forcing them out. The landowners would have the option to change the zoning at which time, if they ever decided to. So, they would be able to remain as residents as long as the landowner wanted to have that use on the property. This doesn't make them change to industrial. It just gives the option for that landowner to change in the future.
Mayor, that's correct. And the slide that's before you identifies that ultimately, the landowner has that power to request changes if they so choose. In fact, we did have a number of property owners that approached us during the public process for the plan and requested that the city consider the possibility of a coordinated zone change process to help facilitate those zone changes.
Mr. Hughesman, you have anything else?
No, I just, I'm just concerned that, you know, a group of property owners who are currently providing low-rent options for community members decide that it's more advantageous to change their zoning, and now we have a whole group of people who no longer get a, can afford to live in our city. And that's just disconcerting to me.
Okay, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, another question about the railroad. Now, the railroad owns a lot of, I mean, I'm understanding they own a lot of rental property as well?
They would own the property where the necklace is supposed to go in, across Rosemary to the south of the Worth Manor or Gala Gardens, that strip to the west, they would own.
Okay, 'cause I know there's some.
You can see where the railroad is on your map?
Yeah.
The strip where they need to put in rail if they ever decide to do that, they did purchase that, the homes along that street.
Okay.
But I don't believe that they own them anywhere else, other than along where the rail would go in.
All right. Presently, are those occupied with the residents in there now, or are they abandoned property? Do you know?
Mayor, to answer that question, I would say a portion of them are, if they are residential properties. Obviously, the Union Pacific owns several different types of properties. Some are more agricultural in nature at this point, but they do own some properties that are residential in nature.
All right.
And they have a management company that handles the renting of the homes that they own.
Well, I would hope that this project does go forward, and there are some changes that with the folks who are residing in these rental properties and the time of change, if Cooper owns their property, could work with those folks as far as assisting them to find a place that's suitable and affordable would be great. Keep that in, just keep that in mind there. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'll go to the audience. I know there's one lady here that wants to speak. Is there any others that are here to speak on the, during the public hearing for the Irondale Plan? Ma'am, come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gail Bates. I reside at Eighty-Sixth, Ninety-Sixth, Willow Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. My concern is Willow Street in Exanthea, because we're just kind of isolated in between Highway Two and then Rosemary. There's no other streets because.
Willow's the one that has the barricades up that's blocked off, right? Is that correct?
No, we have.
That's Eighty-Sixth?
That's Eighty-Sixth.
And it goes from Willow to Verbania or whatever?
Yeah, we are, they're going to open Eighty-Sixth, because we have no way for ambulances, fire trucks, police to get through if the Union Pacific is blocking the road.
We actually improved or approved development plan rezoning for a property along Eighty-S sixth Avenue, I would believe it was a couple of months ago. They would be giving the right-of-way necessary for Eighty-S sixth Avenue to be opened up. It would be improved, but it would still be a gravel road. We have concerns about the dust and wanting to make sure that it's maintained, but it would reopen Eighty-S sixth Avenue, from my understanding. If staff has a different perspective, now's the time to bring that perspective to hand, to light. Chris, you have anything to add?
That's correct.
That's correct, all right.
Okay.
So, Eighty-Sixth, because, and it's not because of this plan, it's because we were able to achieve and get the right-of-way during the zoning process, that now we'll be able to open that Eighty-S sixth Avenue back up, and then we should have a maintained gravel surface between Willow and Verbania, or whatever that blocked-off section was.
That would be a big help, because like I said, it's hard to get some emergency vehicles in that area.
Sure.
And there's a lot of older people that live in that area that need to, hopefully not, but could have it. And also, I'm concerned about the street condition of Willow. We have so many eighteen-wheel trucks going up the street for the business at the end of Willow that intersects Eighty-S sixth. I mean, there must be twenty trucks a day that's eighteen-wheel that go flying by at fifty miles an hour, not twenty-five. And I'm just wondering, are they going to resurface it just pothole by pothole, or are they going to flat-out resurface it?
Well, I could tell you my, from listening to the presentation and having the plan in place, it does show that the roads in that residential area, including Willow, would be surface improvements, and that's something that we have to figure out financing, how we're going to finance that. And that's where that Citizen Improvement Advisory Council comes into play when we're talking about our capital improvements and where the money would come from. But in the meantime, we should be up there patching the potholes and making the surface more drivable. The downside is, is when that, and it wasn't this council, but a previous council, forced annex that area, and when they took it over, it's hard to even determine where it goes from what's supposed to be paved and what's gravel. And so, I would direct the staff to have someone go up there and see what repairs they can make to make those roads at least passable in the meantime. But it really comes down to funding and resources and determining when, and it would be, all those roads would probably get a treatment at the same time. In the past, we've talked about it, and those roads aren't in a position where we can just go in and put a layer of asphalt on top of an old asphalt road. Those roads are in such bad shape, they would have to be totally redone. So, we'd have to tear everything out, new base, and rebuild all those roads, which is significantly more expensive than just maintaining existing asphalt. So, for you, I would tell you, there is maintenance folks that should be up there maintaining those roads so that you're not hitting potholes. City manager shaking his head, yes. I will tell you, we do have an app, and you can reach out on the city's website to do a CRM request, which means within twenty-four hours, someone will respond to you and let you know when your complaint will be taken care of. But that's why we have the staff we have. If you have a concern or complaint with the current road situation, you need to call in, and we'll get someone up there to patch potholes or do whatever's necessary. And in the meantime, we'll work towards finding a way to finance and redo all the roads in that area.
But there is no timeline or anything like this?
This plan is a future map. I can't, with having eight other colleagues, I can't tell you when the timeframe would be. I do know we have a pavement maintenance program, and there is a process of where that circulates every seven years. Do you know when Irondale is on the list for our pavement maintenance program?
Mayor, I believe, given the overall port condition of the streets in Irondale, we do very little pavement maintenance. It's filling potholes, as you mentioned, and then brainstorming a more permanent, longer-term solution to rebuilding the streets and the storm sewers in that area.
Yep. And we've brought it up many times. We want to get those roads rebuilt and have brand-new roads up there. It comes down to the financing. And we'll look at it during our CIP retreat and work with the Citizens Improvement Advisory Council on when we can time that to have the money to redo those roads.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming in tonight. Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address Gail. I know we mentioned, we talked with you briefly out in the lobby, and it's a matter of finding the information outside of being on the internet and whatnot. So, Councilman Douglas and myself, again, as we promised, would be available. If you had any other questions, just feel free to reach out to us. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Serna, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Kiaer Muserna, one four one two two, East Two Hundred and Second Place. This conversation has been going on for ages, and I agree with Mr. as far as the quality of life that's there. When that whole section was annexed, the trailer courts and roads were supposed to have been fixed. They're still the same. That quality of life is not good enough. We can plan roads and this and that, but all we're doing is adding more traffic to Commerce City coming in from the rest of the cities, and they're not cooperating well with Commerce City. The annexation south of where you're planning this needs to be improved a hundred percent, but yet we say it's too expensive. But we bring in business, and we don't look at the planning of it. Every time we plan, we plan, we plan, twenty, thirty years later, three or four city councils differences, it changes. Somewhere along the line, you have to communicate with people. If it's eighty-eight people, then by God, take the time to go over there and talk to them. Some of these people don't have computers. Some of these people are, don't have the energy to come and drive. You had a celebration of a person tonight. That's what's out there. I don't care how many people and all the research and everything, they don't know what's out there. We need to do some better planning, not just in one little area, but from Seventy-Second all the way to our boundary lines to Brighton. We need that quality of life. So, when you plan these things, bring everybody together, the water, whatever they're trying to do. We need to start looking at the future of the city. And he said it. She said it. the future of the city. And he said it. She said it. We have to start doing better planning, not just a bit here and a bit there. We were gonna build a hell of a city in twenty years. Took eight years, and then we had to cut it down and slow it down. But yet, some of the areas here in Commerce City that are not annexed are still waiting because we can't afford it, but we can afford everything else, not the quality of life of these people that are living there. And they provided revenue for this city. That they're not part of the city, that's something else. But we have to start looking at how we can improve that quality of life there, not just in one area or the business side, but in the residential also. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas, you have something?
Yes, looking at our pavement maintenance program, I see the corrective for Area F, which is the outlook area, is for this year, two thousand and eighteen. Is it too late to include that small portion in Irondale as far as Willow and the other streets over there? Because they're not, they're not very long, and they're just single-lane roads as part of that package?
We had made a note, as the woman made the comment, to go out and check the condition, see what maintenance needs to be done on Willow and the streets in that immediate area. Again, the approach in Irondale has been to sort of fix immediate problems, patch potholes, because any amount of resurfacing is just not a very good investment, given the poor drainage and the poor subsurface conditions. That's why the focus is very basic maintenance and then strategizing a longer-term solution. But we'll absolutely go out and take a look at Willow and see what we need to do on an interim basis. Probably not the sort of corrective action we're doing in the outlook neighborhood, but certainly try to keep the road as passable as possible until we can come up with a longer-term solution.
Okay. Even if you just cut the road down, maybe, you know, as far as patching, not do a mill, but if you can just trim off the, you know, top and do a thin layer of just kind of like in-between maintenance?
Well, that's essentially what a mill and overlay is. Again, the challenge in the Irondale neighborhood is they're in such poor condition, it just hasn't historically seemed like a very good investment. Patch them as best we can and seek the funding for a long-term solution.
Okay.
Because again, the drainage is such a big part of the road condition in that area, and fixing the drainage without, or fixing the roads without fixing the drainage just didn't seem like a very sound investment.
Right. Because looking on this map here, as far as Area D corrective will be till two thousand and twenty-three, preventive two thousand and twenty-one, and routine two thousand and twenty, and we're in two thousand and eighteen. And then, if this implemented with the drainage, the roads are gonna come up anyway. So, it is a timing thing.
The other broader challenge, as the city council probably knows, our annual investment in pavement maintenance citywide is about two million dollars. We've been struggling to find a way to increase the amount of investment annually in pavement maintenance. Going into the two thousand and nineteen budget process as we are, we have a fresh opportunity to look at ways of trying to send more money into our pavement maintenance program. Two million dollars really is not a great deal of money, given the size of our city, but increasing that investment has been a challenge for us.
Right. All right. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council during this hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'm open for a motion and a second on the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case SAP dash zero zero five dash one eight. Councilwoman Frank.
My motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case SAP zero zero five dash eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion and a second on Ordinance SAP dash zero zero five dash one eight. Mr. Wadiola.
Motion for, which one was it? Sorry.
The ordinance, SAP oh oh five one eight.
Oh oh five one eight.
Okay. Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a second, a motion and a second to approve Ordinance SAP oh oh five one eight. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, I'd like to ask the city attorney to read the title.
Ordinance SAP zero zero five one eight, an ordinance adopting the Irondale Neighborhood and Infrastructure Plan and amending the city's comprehensive plan.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Paul, just for the record, the agenda noted that the title would be amending the city's comprehensive plan, but this would simply be an ordinance adopting the Irondale Neighborhood and Infrastructure Plan.
All right. I'm open for a roll call vote. For the record, the ordinance is introduced unanimously by the council with one excused absence. All right, next item on the agenda is another public hearing, SAP dash zero zero six dash one eight, Resolutions two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-five, Resolution two dash one eight dash forty-one, and Resolution two zero one eight dash forty-two. Second public hearing tonight is on the Mile High Greyhound Park Urban Renewal Plan and two related resolutions. We will consider the urban renewal plan first, and then the two resolutions. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the staff forward to give their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We do have those three actions. I am going to be doing just one presentation for all three. And again, it is a pleasure to be here before you tonight. Tonight represents the culmination of many different efforts by both the URA Board and city council, as well as arriving at agreements with a lot of other jurisdictions. And so, it is a significant milestone tonight that will allow a lot of other processes to begin with the potential adoption of these cases tonight. So, the first resolution is the adoption...
Oh, geez, sorry.
We okay down there?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm excited, too. So, the first one is the adoption of the, of the actual urban renewal plan. And this is, a copy of the plan was included in the packet. As background, the URA has a partner, Regen LLC, which is attempting to adopt, pass this urban renewal plan to help create a TIF, tax increment financing, to help finance any redevelopment for the site, especially for the public portions of the infrastructure, roads, utilities, drainage, et cetera. The, a new urban renewal plan was created to allow for that type of TIF reinvestment. Here's a site plan of the area that the urban renewal plan covers. You'll notice that it does not include the Boys and Girls Club to the southeast at Sixty-second and Holly. However, that is a part of the original project. There are a number of objectives listed in the plan. I'm not gonna hit all of these, but I will outline just a couple of highlights for you. The objective of the urban renewal plan is to be able to provide incentives to stimulate private investment, to ensure that there's a public-private partnership for the purposes of helping address blight in the area. Furthermore, it outlines a phasing plan. The phasing, the first phase of the area is intended to be the residential portions of the project, and will hopefully begin sometime next year. Within the objectives, there's obviously a list of outcomes that it hopes to address, including a number that are in the plan and that you can see in the PowerPoint. These are obviously very similar to the ones that were addressed in the urban renewal plan a short time ago. Items such as implementing elements of the comprehensive plan, which the Planning Commission heard, filling vacant infill parcels to put to productive use. As you recall, the site has been vacant since two thousand and twelve. To also have a spillover effect onto adjacent properties nearby, to promote redevelopment and stability into surrounding neighborhoods for the inclusion of a mix of uses. And then, another one to highlight is obviously to provide a range of financing mechanisms to incentivize the private and not-for-profit investment. The project was not moving forward through market rate-only types of financing schemes, and so therefore, the Urban Renewal Authority purchased it with the hopes of utilizing this type of funding mechanisms to promote the redevelopment of the site. The Planning Commission did hear the case, voted unanimously that the plan, the URA plan, is in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan, and recommended approval of the urban renewal plan. The Urban Renewal Authority Board met a short time ago tonight and also recommended to you, the city council, for the adoption of the urban renewal plan. The other two actions for the city council's consideration tonight is the cooperation agreement between the URA and the city. That authorizes the three-point-five percent sales tax to be used for the project for the purpose of eliminating blight on the property. It does not include the one percent two K initiative sales tax that was approved a few years ago. The staff recommends approval of this, and also the Urban Renewal Authority Board also voted recently, just earlier tonight, to recommend approval of this. The final one is a resolution approving and amending the master developer agreement. It's a three-party agreement that the Urban Renewal Authority, Regen LLC, and the city council have all signed. Therefore, the Urban Renewal Authority and city council both need to vote on the amendment. But, in short, the major purposes of the amendment are to acknowledge the terms and the updates as a result of the agreements with all the other taxing entities that have been arrived at over the past little over a year. It also updated various exhibits and project schedules that were included and pro formas, and then finally, provided some legal cleanup on certain definitions for clarity purposes, including the three-point-five percent city sales tax amount that was discussed earlier. Staff is recommending approval of the restated master development agreement, and the URA also voted to approve the updated master development agreement. Rick Wells with Regen LLC is also here tonight, and he has just a couple of comments about all the actions that are here before you.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council, for the opportunity to be here today. We're very excited about moving forward with this plan, and we're very excited about what we can build here in Commerce City. Just remind you of some of the basic elements of the plan. Reestablishing the city grid through the currently vacant site Parkway, Sixty-third, Fairfax, establishing some different quadrants of the site, including a lot of residential and mixed uses, office, commercial, residential product of various types. There will be, planned to be a commercial quadrant in the southeast portion of the site, which, or southwest, excuse me, which we hope to attract various restaurant, retail, possibly hotel use into that quadrant, and then the institutional and educational parts of the site in the northwest quadrant. Just a list of uses, some pictures about what the site might look like, and emphasizing the diversity of the product that we're looking for in the site. Why do we need public financing help on this project? Basically, when you look at the cost to develop the site, all the roads, water, sewer, infrastructure that is needed, we come up to an estimate of about fifteen million dollars. When you add to that the costs that have already been spent to acquire the site, bait and demolish the previous structures, do a regional stormwater improvement that's required to improve that facility on the site, legal costs, you add all that together, and you're at about twenty-five million dollars worth of costs to get this site ready for the market. When you look at the estimated land value of that land, when it is ready for market, of approximately twelve million dollars, you can see that there's a significant shortfall of twelve to thirteen million dollars in the funding or in the economics of this project. And that leads you to the conclusion that you have to have some sort of a public-private partnership because the land value and simply does not cover the costs to develop the project. And looking at the project, working with the city staff, working with the city council, we've determined that using an urban renewal project funding mechanism is the best way to fill that project funding gap. And so, with that, we went out to all the various taxing agencies, talked to them all, explained the program. Some of them had some needs which we had to accommodate within the agreements and within the urban renewal plan, and we've done that. And the plan that you have before you does fit all those needs and has been agreed to by all of the various taxing authorities associated with this project. Next, next steps with the urban renewal plan approval, tomorrow morning, literally, I'll sign an engineering contract that kicks off the next phase of engineering construction documentation, which takes the project all the way through to construction documents for all of the infrastructure. I'll be able to go out and attract the private financing that is needed to build that infrastructure with the promise that that will be repaid with the urban renewal financing plan that we're asking to get approved tonight. We're in process, we're in negotiations with one buyer for approximately half the site to do a variety of residential and mixed-use products, and we will hopefully begin construction of that infrastructure pending approvals and all that by the end of two thousand and eighteen, with construction beginning on the first vertical product in two thousand and nineteen. Just a reminder of what we're trying to get to, it's this sort of a walkable, livable, urban living environment with a variety of housing and a variety of living and working opportunities for the residents of Commerce City. Thanks again for your participation and support for the project.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions for the staff or for Rick Wells at this time?
Yeah. Thank you, Rick. My question is, I know we've had several talks about the pro forma, and I have not seen an update on that. Could you make sure that an updated pro forma gets sent out to the city council? Because we have four new council members, and you need to be aware of how things are structured that way, too.
Sure. And I apologize, that was included as some of the exhibits on the amended urban, or, excuse me, the amended master development agreement, but we'll make sure that you get those in front of you and have a chance to look at those.
Okay. Thank you.
I can tell you that basically, the pro forma works about the same as it did the last time you saw it. I will say, construction costs are up over the last two years, not unexpected with the pricing of this environment and the amount of construction going on. So, that's really the biggest change.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Ford.
Yes, sir.
I would note for council's reference, coming up on Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash four two is a copy of the amended and restated phased redevelopment agreement and Exhibit A to Exhibit C to that. I believe page forty-nine is a copy of the pro forma for your reference.
Okay, thank you.
It is buried and identified separately.
Thank you. Anyone else on council have any questions for staff or for Rick Wells at this time? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on the matters before us, including the urban renewal plan, cooperative agreement, and redevelopment agreement? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Kathy Luna, Boys and Girls Club, sixty-two oh one Holly Street.
Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. We are here to voice our support for moving forward with the project. It gets a little lonely on that big piece of property all by ourselves, and I think that the redevelopment will just bring more vibrancy and life to an already growing city and be a benefit for everyone.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Elliot Smith. I'm with Kentrow Group, and we're here representing Commerce City Plaza, which is a shopping center with the King Supers and adjacent retail at six zero two five East Parkway Drive. And our center is located just south of Sixty-second Street from the proposed development, and I'm here as a strong proponent of the Mile High Ground Urban Renewal Development Plan, as additional housing, representing a mix of income levels, will lead to a healthy blend of businesses wanting to come to the area. We've had multiple national and regional tenants. I look into lease space at our shopping center, and they ultimately passed because of the low quantity of housing in the media area. Filling vacancies not only helps our business, but it will bring additional dining and shopping options to the people of Commerce City, along with increased sales tax revenue for the local agencies. King Supers recently made capital investments in their store, and part of that was due to anticipated development of the site. to anticipated development of the site. With Kentrow, look forward to increased activity in the area and encourage you to support the proposed renewal plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on these matters? Please come forward.
Long time coming. That's great. Just don't give up on our school district with the children that you're going to be bringing into this area. Start working with the district. It needs help, and it needs some advice in perspective to meeting the needs of our kids. Bringing in new kids into the buildings that we have now need assistance to how that can be done, once these children start coming in, and they will. So, you know it, everybody knows it. The district needs help. Don't give up on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak on these matters? Come forward, please. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Ed Hanson, I live at 7630 Leyden Lane in Commerce City. I'm president of the Commerce City Cultural Council. This is a very interesting project. It has the potential of bringing the center of this city together, and I would like to encourage all those who were involved in the planning of it to consider the cultural possibilities here to provide a center of cultural activity and beauty, since there is a school and a retail center, and there will be housing, and hopefully, a lot of people will be drawn to this. Consider including, meeting places where people can express cultural diversity and participate in cultural activities, and possibly even some public art. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to come speak before us on these matters? Saying none, I'll close the public hearing. I'm open for a motion and a second on the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case SAP 00618. Mr. Madera.
Move to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case SAP-006-18.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frank?
Second.
I have that motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-35 regarding the Urban Renewal Plan. Councilwoman Frank?
I motion to approve Resolution 2018-35.
Councilwoman Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council at this time? Saying none. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
May I read the title, Mayor?
Read the title, please.
Thank you. Resolution 2018-35, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, making certain legislative findings and approving the Mile High Greyhound Park Urban Renewal Plan in Case Number SAP 00618/URP-002-12-16-18. Thank you.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Now, I'm open for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-41 regarding the cooperation agreement with the URA. Mr. Madera?
Move to approve Resolution 2018-41.
Thank you. Mr. Huesman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2018-41, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, authorizing and approving a cooperation agreement with the Urban Renewal Authority of the City of Commerce City.
Is there any discussion by the council? Saying none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now, I'm open for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-42 regarding the amendment to the redevelopment agreement. Mr. Huesman?
Motion to approve Resolution 2018-42 regarding the amendment to the redevelopment agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by the council? Saying none, will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2018-42, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, approving the amended and restated phased redevelopment agreement for the former Mile High Greyhound Park.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you all for coming in this evening.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations. Next order of business, ordinance is on first reading. We'll start with Ordinance 2169. Anyone on council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Saying none. I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 2169 by council as seated. Mr. Madera?
Move to introduce Ordinance 2169 by council as seated.
Thank you, Mr. Huesman.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2169, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant Funds in the amount of $115,000 for the Sand Creek Open Space Remediation Phase One Project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Douglas? Yours isn't working? Probably gonna have to reset it again. For the record, Ordinance 2169 is introduced unanimously, one excused absence. Now, we go to Ordinance 2170. Is there anyone on council that has any questions regarding this ordinance? Mr. Diaz?
I don't know.
No? Okay. Nobody? All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Saying none. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Diaz?
Move to introduce Ordinance 2170 on first reading, council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Huesman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2170, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant Funds in the amount of $250,804 for the Eagle Point Recreation Center Aquatic Enhancements Project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
All right. For the record, Ordinance 2170 is introduced unanimously by the council, one excused absence. Now, we go to Ordinance 2171. Is there anyone on council who has any questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Saying none, I'm open for a motion. Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve Ordinance 2171 by council as seated.
Mr. Huesman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title of Ordinance 2171?
Ordinance 2171, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the State of Colorado Department of Natural Resources Funding Agreement in the amount of $228,523 for the Sand Creek Open Space Remediation and Restoration Project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
For the record, Ordinance 2171 is introduced unanimously by the city council of Commerce City, other than one excused absence. Now, we'll go to Ordinance 2172. I'd like to invite the city attorney to make a presentation on this ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Members of the city council, last week at the study session, council requested that an ordinance, an emergency ordinance be placed on the agenda for this evening regarding penalties for fireworks. The municipal judge spoke on this item earlier, and I did send an email to council with potential amendments that I'll address later in this presentation. Currently, in the City of Commerce City, fireworks are prohibited in their totality. That is done throughout the fire code, as noted there. It's a general prohibition, but there are some exceptions and the opportunity for a permit, such as for the public display at Dick's Sporting Goods Park on 4th of July. Parks properties have a separate and additional prohibition for the use and discharge on parks properties. There is no minimum penalty currently established for any code violations, but they are subject to the court fee schedule, which I believe currently sets the first offense fine at $100, subject to the court discretion. There is a statewide statutory maximum on misdemeanors of $2,650, in addition to a potential up to one year of imprisonment. As discussed last week, there's an impact of illegal fireworks in the community, including a threat of personal injury and property damage. Commerce City had at least two structure fires in 2017, and currently, the region is experiencing an abnormally dry season. The National Fire Protection Association indicated that fireworks cause, on average, about 18,500 fires a year, and that in 2015, hospitals treated almost 12,000 people for fireworks-related injuries. They impact the quality of life in the city, particularly related to nose and noise and odor, and they have an impact on police, fire, and emergency medical services, especially during the holidays. This is a statistic brought to you by the chief of police last week, showing a dramatic increase in fireworks calls that tax the already strained emergency services providers in the city. So, Ordinance 2172, as proposed, sets a mandatory minimum, and not even minimum, just a mandatory penalty for fireworks violations under the code, wherever they may be, by setting a $500 fine for a first offense, $1,000 for any subsequent offense, in addition to anything else that would apply for misdemeanors. That includes fees and court costs, that potential for imprisonment, and then restitution for damages and fireworks destruction. As the chief noted to you last week, it can cost several thousand dollars for the city to destroy fireworks collected at any given time, and that amount could be apportioned to someone who's convicted of an offense. In order to pass an emergency ordinance, the charter requires a vote of seven yes votes and the declaration of an emergency, so the ordinance also accomplishes those actions. It also becomes effective immediately tonight to impose these minimum fines, which would be in advance of the holiday season for 4th of July. I understand there's a communications plan surrounding this ordinance if approved. So, your action potential this evening, as you discuss and consider this ordinance, are to move and introduce and approve Ordinance 2172 as an emergency ordinance. You could also amend the proposed ordinance, and so I have proposed two options to account for the judge's concerns about suspended sentences that would potentially conflict with state law and limit his ability to enforce penalties here and avoid jury trials. The first would be to allow the suspension of a sentence of the fine for any violation or to allow the suspension of a fine on a second offense. And then, the other option this evening, in addition to declining to enact the ordinance, is to postpone it to a future meeting. So, I am available if there are any questions, I believe. Chief of Police is also present if you have any questions.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone on council who has any questions regarding this ordinance? Mr. Douglas, you have a question?
No, it's a motion.
Any questions? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward to address the council on this matter? Saying none. Mr. Douglas, I'm open for a motion.
I'm trying to ask you a question.
Oh, you have a question, Mr. Huesman? Okay, ask your question.
Thank you. I'm just curious whether or not we have the resources available to enforce this ordinance if it is passed.
Chief, you want to come up?
I have the same problem you guys have up there. Good evening. Resources are always a challenge. However, I can tell you, given our enforcement plan that we're putting together, it's going to require overtime to bring officers in. We are going to be doing enforcement. Last year was an eye-opener for us to watch homes burn because people were partying with fireworks in the middle of the street. So, enforcement is not really an option at this point. We have to do something to sort of quiet the city with regards to fireworks. Resources are a challenge, but we've put together a fairly robust plan that will allow us to address it adequately, if that answers your question.
Thank you. I just know in previous conversations, we discussed that these calls for fireworks being let off tend to be a lower priority than other calls that you guys receive. So, I want to make sure that if we do approve an ordinance that imposes fines and the community is relying on this ordinance in order to prevent the nuisance fireworks that seem to be let off, not just on July 4th, but a month after July 4th and two months after July 4th, that we're going to have the resources available to enforce the ordinance and make sure that we've actually done what we've attempted to do versus throwing something out there that doesn't actually solve the problem.
We're hopeful that we'll be able to address it. And again, as I mentioned, we've got a significant enforcement plan out, and that plan will have officers that will be dealing explicitly with fireworks violations. They will not be handling routine calls for service. So, we will have the resources available to deal with residents' complaints, and we're hoping we'll minimize the "I called five hours ago and nobody showed up." We'll be able to get somebody out there relatively quickly.
And will that involve officers in unmarked vehicles, so as they patrol through the neighborhood, people aren't just yelling out "5O" and waiting for the police car to go through before they let off the fireworks?
That will be a combination of both.
Any other questions? Mr. Wadiola, you have a question?
Yeah. My big concern is tying the judge's hands. I mean, he will do what is directed to him, but, I mean, I don't want to put him in a jeopardizing situation between state law and municipal law. So, you know, that's a big concern if it passes the way it's written right now. I'd like to see it amended, to give him a compromise and a leeway.
Mayor Ford, may I note to account for that, I think procedurally, it would be property who have a motion to approve the ordinance, and then while that motion is pending, offer an amendment, potentially, one of the two that I offered to council.
Any other questions? Saying none. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Douglas?
Sure. Motion to introduce and approve Ordinance 2172 by council as seated as an emergency ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Diaz?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Now, we can go to discussion. Is there a discussion? Mr. Huesman?
Given the earlier testimony that we heard from Judge Juarez, I think that it would be more prudent for us to amend the penalties that are proposed in this ordinance, to make it so that he's able to do his job without restrictions from this body.
You have a motion, amendment to the motion?
Would council like to allow the suspension of the fine in all circumstances or only on the second offense? So, that would require that the first offense would have a mandatory $500 fine. It would certainly be council's preference, whichever one.
I would prefer, actually, as opposed to having an option for suspended, that the second offense be reduced to the state limit of $750. second offense be reduced to the state limit of $750.
Okay, I have an amended motion to allow for mandatory fine of $500, second offense to drop down to the state maximum of 750. Is that correct, Mr. Huesman?
Yes.
So, and just for clarification, is that, I did not hear the judge identify that minimum, if that is the one he indicated.
He indicated the state was $750.
Okay. So that I would suggest a motion to amend the proposed new penalties section to replace the $1,000 with $750.
Both mandatory, though, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You want to make, you want to have him read that again, or it's your amendment?
So my motion is to amend the section regarding fines from $1,000 for a second and subsequent offense to $750 to match the state fine, and those would still be mandatory sentences.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? I have Councilwoman Frank? No? Councilwoman Wadiola?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Now, I have a motion and a second on the floor. We go back to discussion. Mr. Douglas, do you have discussion?
No. So we didn't need to vote on the first one to...
No, because it was amended.
Okay.
So the current question is the amendment for council to vote on, and once that is decided, then you would go back to discussing the ordinance as a whole.
All right. So we're going to vote on amending it from the $1,500 to $750 and $500. All right, that's what's on the floor. All those in favor of that amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now I have a motion and a second on the floor for a $500 first-time offense.
$750.
$750 for a second offense and their mandatory fines. Correct?
Correct.
All right, now we'll go into discussion before we vote on the motion and the second on the floor. Councilwoman Frank?
So my understanding, though, that he, that Judge Juarez was talking about the fact that we didn't have the suspended language in the amendment, is that, so I just want to make sure that we're doing it in a way that he can actually follow through and, you know, assess these fines. So does that language need to be included?
I believe, as written, there would be a potential conflict with state law with that suspended in there. However, I believe the judge indicated that if the fine was reduced to some extent to avoid jury trials, that may also give him some flexibility, but to absolutely avoid the conflict, allowing the judge to suspend the sentence and allow probation in accordance with state law would, I believe, be the preference that he stated.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I have a few things to say about this before I vote on it. Growing up in Commerce City, first and foremost, I will tell you that there's not a kid in this city that doesn't want to set off fireworks. And that was me. When I was a kid, I wanted to light off fireworks. I know the state of Colorado has a fireworks limitation, and the county as well, and they sell stuff. You get a sign that you're from out of state and everything else. But what I've seen in the community over the last few years, and especially last year, are mortars the size of what you would see at professional fireworks displays coming up out of neighborhoods. Two houses were damaged. One, the guy burned his own garage up, and then another one, firework landed on the roof of another house and caught it on fire. I think the complaints that I've received, and they go back many years, where I had people coming to council meetings with black trash bags full of spent fireworks out of the street that it had rained that night, they dumped them out on the floor in the council chambers and said, "Why aren't you enforcing your ordinance?" So we do have and participate in a very large-scale fireworks display. It's one of the biggest in the state of Colorado, and it's out of, over here at the Rapid Stadium. And we spent a lot of money, and that was the whole reason why they banned the fireworks when I was a kid in Commerce City, was because the city was going to be providing that opportunity for you to be able to view it without endangering people in our community. I now have grandkids, and they want to, you know, my grandson wants to light off fireworks. We go outside of the city to a property that's not in violation to light off fireworks in a safer situation. Last year, we had people that were thumbing their nose at the $100 fine that we had in place. They're spending thousands of dollars on fireworks, and they're getting a $100 fine. We'll pay it and just keep lighting off our fireworks. People coming in that have husbands with PTSD from the military that were complaining. And personally, fireworks are great on Fourth of July, but a month before and a month after, I think it gets a little bit ridiculous. And we've already started hearing them in my neighborhood. I'm sure they're going off in other places. The fireworks stands are getting ready to open up all over around our community, and it's not limited to the Fourth of July. It's limited to two months before or a month before, a month after. It's a two-month-long celebration, and I'm all about celebrating the independence of this country, but there's a limitation when it comes to the safety and well-being of people in the community. So since it can't be restricted to one day and people decide to do whatever they want, the only way we can try to show the residents that we're trying to do our part is to by placing a higher fine for those folks who violate our ordinance. And keep in mind, Mr. Huesman brought up enforcement. I know we aren't going to catch, and nobody should have the idea that we'll be able to catch every person that lights off a firework in Commerce City. It's like speeding. You might speed every day. If you continue to speed, you're going to get caught sooner or later. And so just so you know, you're at risk for a $500 minimum fine or $500 mandatory fine the first time you get caught lighting off fireworks. If you get caught again, it'll be $750 in each time thereafter, and the whole intent isn't to discourage people from celebrating our independence, but to reduce risk of health and safety in our community. Therefore, I will be supporting the motion and second on the floor. Seeing no other discussion, I have that motion and second on the floor. The city attorney, do you need to read that title, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2172, an ordinance declaring an emergency and amending the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to establish minimum penalties for the unlawful possession, manufacture, sale, handling, use, and discharge of fireworks.
I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2172, introduced and passed unanimously by emergency ordinance eight to zero, one excused absence. On to ordinance 2173. Is there anyone on council who has any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Seeing none. I'm open for a motion and a second. Councilman Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to introduce ordinance 2173 by council as seated.
Mr. Huesman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second with the city attorney read the title.
Ordinance 2173, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by transferring $375,000 from the general fund to the CIPP fund for costs associated with the acquisition and demolition of the Forest Drive property located at 6017 Forest Drive in Commerce City and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. Ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2173 is introduced unanimously by the City Council with one excused absence. Now it takes us to presentations. The presentation portion of the meeting. First update will be the Derby Annual Update. Caitlin is going to be providing that update, so go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council.
For one moment, before we, before I let Caitlin get started, Mr. Douglas has to leave. So I want to, for the record, he will be leaving just in front of the presentation portion of the meeting. Brian, do we need to do an excuse for him prior to his leaving? All right, well, I'll take care of it when Robert comes back. But just make sure when he comes back, if I need to, we'll get it going. Go ahead, Caitlin.
Thank you. I'm very excited to share with you this evening our regular update on the Derby Downtown District and the progress that we have been making over the last couple of years. For those of you who are unfamiliar with Derby, it is one of our urban renewal areas and has an adopted subarea plan. This is for the neighborhood, the small commercial district at the intersection of Highway Two and 72nd Avenue. These are the goals from the Derby Subarea Plan. They include establishing Derby as a destination within the city, enhancing the neighborhood's visibility and identity, revitalizing Derby and becoming an environmental model, as well as transforming it into a healthy and multimodal traffic environment. And the work that we do in Derby also aligns with the city council goal of developing a balanced and vibrant city economy to improve socioeconomic status. The purpose of the update tonight is to highlight some of the accomplishments we've had in the last couple of years and to discuss some updates that we have for the Derby Downtown District and then share with you all the upcoming projects and actions that we have going on that will advance the goals of the Derby Downtown District as well as the city council goals. Obviously, some of the big key projects that have happened in the last couple of years you're very familiar with, including the Highway Two widening project, the new right-turn lane from 72nd onto Highway Two, and the public parking lot in the former Derby Park. All of this was accomplished, construction completed, I believe, late last year. I know in our last update to you all, we had some, we had the Director of Public Works able to share some of our construction documents at that time. If there's additional questions about those projects, please let me know, and I'm happy to answer them. But I do want to share with you a little bit more about the behind-the-scenes work that we do in Derby with the Derby Review Board. So that's what I'm going to focus on tonight. In the last couple of years, we've had several cases going to the Derby Review Board. This is an architectural review committee that reviews any of the exterior improvements that go on in Derby. They also administer the Derby Catalyst Program, which I'll talk about more a little bit later. So far, in this, in 2018, we've had five cases. We had 10 total in 2017 and five in 2016, so we have had a pretty good utilization of the review board and new projects that are coming in. These cases included requests for signage, windows, fencing, landscaping, exterior improvements such as, sorry, such as painting, and then also a new construction. The Derby Review Board also approved funding for a wayfinding signage and district lighting plan for future strategic investments in the Derby District. I want to share with you some of the case highlights that we've had the last couple of years. This is an exterior renovation of the property at 6,600 East 74th Avenue. This was formerly Joe's Auto Garage, and it has been converted into artist studios called Magnolia Street Art Space, which is a really exciting project that we're hoping is going to be a good catalyst to really turn, to really bring in more people into Derby and make it a place that people want to spend more time. Phase one of this project included what you see here, the storefront windows, some accent signing, the exterior paint, and then the patio flatwork around the building. The phase two, which the Derby Review Board approved earlier this year, will include some large floral graphics murals on the building, as well as the landscaping and signage and fencing for the patio area. There's various new signs around Derby. This is the, probably the number-one type of project that we see going through the Derby Review Board is for new signage. So you can see that several of the prominent businesses in Derby have received new signs in the last couple of years. And in addition, Joel Martinez with the Yellow Rose Event Center has done a lot of work for his properties, both on both sides of Monaco, including some brick repair to his main building and landscaping, fencing, and signage to the east side of Monaco, which is looking really nice. So the Catalyst Fund program is a, is a fund that we have available to allocate up to $25,000 per individual applicant per year as a 50% reimbursement of eligible project costs, including any of those types of exterior improvements that I've mentioned as some of our example cases. If they are not used within a certain period, those funds do lapse, so they continue to be available for other applicants, and the review board has the ability to fund city-initiated projects that will benefit the district as a whole if they so choose. Over the last few years, you can see the catalyst utilization here. 2016 was a, was a record year for us, and that also included the funding for the wayfinding signage and district lighting plans, which I'll talk to you about in just a minute here. But that was a really exciting year for us, and then last year, we also saw very high utilization of the catalyst funds as well. So far this year, I'm hoping that we'll, we'll see a couple of more big-scale projects that can use more of this fund. So for the signage and lighting plans, the origins of this project was in community feedback that we received during open houses several years ago with the intent of providing improved safety or perceived safety, as well as better district and business identification. So the Derby Review Board approved funds to do these strategic plans in the fall of 2016. We hired consultants for that and then kicked off the project in spring of 2017, and we just wrapped that up this spring, so it's been a really exciting year of work. We did a lot of community engagement within Derby to try to gain as much input as we could from the community, including two workshops and a final open house last summer. We also had banners and sticker dots posted at the Civic Center and at the Recreation Center to try to get some additional feedback from those who may not be able to attend night meetings. And this is the final design package that our consultants were able to put together for us. So it includes some low-maintenance elements that relate to some of the existing signage that we have, such as the tan CMU, the glazed brick, and the aluminum, the brushed aluminum metal usage. And then it includes a lot of lighting elements and signage that's going to give Derby a unique brand and identity that makes it identifiable within the region. And so it includes not only these larger-scale signs, but also the smaller-scale signs within the package for auto navigation, pedestrian signs, kiosks within the district, and historical interpretive signage. These are just a few examples of how these may look in, once they're actually constructed in the environment. This top image here, I do want to draw your attention to in particular, since that is right at the intersection of Highway Two and East 72nd Avenue, which we just finished rebuilding. So once the former Derby Tire Store is demolished, this is an example of what we could expect to see in that particular location with a large horizontal signage piece and some landscaping to really introduce and serve as a Gateway Two Derby. The implementation priorities that we've identified for signage in particular include doing some of the primary gateways first, such as, as I mentioned, the one at 72nd and Highway Two. The highest priority for the community was also the auto navigation signs to be sure that people are able to understand when they're arriving at Derby and what amenities there are to offer within the district, followed by secondary gateways, so smaller monument types of signs, and then the bus shelters to give a transit, give the transit lines a identity within Derby as well. And then within lighting, the small-area poles that are internal to the district are the highest priority for the purposes of both safety and for creating a more uniform lighting atmosphere within the district, followed by the pedestrian poles in the parks and plazas, festival lighting in the Derby Diamond, and finally, large-area poles along 72nd Avenue, which could also be wrapped into a larger project for 72nd Avenue itself. So looking ahead to the next year, we are hoping to begin implementation of the signage and lighting improvements. There is a, there are CIPP requests in for you to begin some of that work, and then we will also continue to work with new developers and users over the, over the coming year to do additional improvements to their exterior facades and help with the Catalyst Fund as necessary. And then also, we are beginning to look at, study- And then also, we are beginning to look at studying some of the infrastructure needs in Derby, such as the diamond pavers are in need of some repair. The overhead electrical and the water supply have been posing some challenges for potential developers. So we're trying to look at some ways to ease future development within the district. And that is what I have for you tonight. But please let me know if there are any questions. I'm happy to answer them.
How do the business find out about the signage? How do they apply for that?
They just need to contact me, and I can provide the application, as well as the criteria that the Derby Review Board uses to evaluate those.
Could you send out your information to council so we could just forward that to them?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor Ford, if council desired to excuse Mr. Douglas from the remainder of the meeting, I understand that question was asked. That would be appropriate.
Motion to approve, Councilman Douglas, from the remainder of the meeting just prior to the presentation starting.
Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have that motion and second to allow for that excused absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, thank you. Some folks are probably wondering what I'm up here doing. There was a major hailstorm that just went through the Fort Lupton area, but they're baseball-sized. So I just was trying to monitor what's going on with some of my family in the areas they live in. All right, Mr. Hanson. The podium is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honored council members. Thank you for this opportunity that I could come before you and describe what our year has been like and what our hopes and dreams are and visions for the coming year. I appreciate your support, and I appreciate the support of the council members who sit on the Cultural Council. The objectives for this is to provide an update on the 2017 activities, including successes and challenges, to share the Cultural Council's plans for 2018, to review surrounding cities' arts and cultural program highlights, and to explore and discuss future opportunities. This is our current board. I'm president, Deborah Bullock, vice president, and all our esteemed members, including our City Council representatives, Crystal Elliott and Jose Guardiola, who just joined us this year. We currently have one vacancy on the council. We have an active group of people who are supporting us. They have put in a lot of time. For 2016, they logged 730 volunteer hours. For 2017, they logged 709 hours. Now, I realize this is a little bit lower, but there's a reason for that. And this is a breakdown of how those hours were spread out. Meetings, administrative, grants, and fundraising work, specific events, which we had quite a few of. Committee planning and other. Fewer volunteer hours reported than the previous year, but the volunteers worked together more efficiently, with enthusiasm, took in more donor support, and got more done than the previous year. The previous board officers and dedicated members of the Cultural Council deserve a lot of credit for this. For 2018, we have a nearly full board with four fresh faces. Actually, we've had more recently. A lot of enthusiasm and a lot of help from the City of Commerce City as we transition to the role of an advisory board. Successes from 2017, the music in the park attendance was counted at 1,764. Our food trucks brought in $752. Our Chipotle fundraiser brought in 588, for a total of 1,340 above our sponsorships and grants. Corporate donations amounted to $2,250 in 2017. This is a little hard to see, but this is a compilation of our survey. At our concerts, we have our attendees fill out surveys, what they want to see, what they want to hear, what they like about it, what suggestions they might have, including the types of bands that we offer. And in this last year, I made sure we started paying more attention to our surveys, and I think we've done pretty well there. Successes from 2017 continued. Our art shows, our spring art shows with school districts. Adams 14 had approximately 300 people attending. Brighton 27J, about 400 in the spring. In the winter art show, we partnered with the city for the tree lighting. We counted 280 attendees. Grants, we pulled in $4,000 from the QCF, and thank you so much to the foundation for that. From SCFD, $42,196, plus a public art grant for Turnberry for $5,600. We had the Memorial Day Parade and outreach events, public art installations. Our council members serve on the art selection committees. We just had our first meeting for Tower Road. Board growth and involvement, the board's almost full. We have engagement of members. Committee work has been very successful, and we're in the process of transitioning to an advisory board, thanks to the support from the city. It's very important. Excuse me. City staff assigned to part-time to support Cultural Council. That would be Ms. Daniela, and we just really appreciate her. Plans for 2018, grant submissions for QCF and SCFD. We did receive one from QCF. They have not yet announced SCFD. Spring art shows with the school districts, both of them were very successful this year. We had... What did I say for 27J?
400.
Yeah, I don't remember. They're still having the showing at the Armory, and the place was packed. It was just packed. Public art dedication at Bison Ridge Rec. Center was very successful. The art is just stunning. The people, the response has been phenomenal, and we're just so happy that it was such a significant event because we had five pieces of art to dedicate at the same time, including our new rotating art show, currently two artists who are teachers from the local schools. And we're planning some more interesting things along that line as soon as Eagle Point reopens. Music in the park, I apologize, those dates are wrong. Those are last year's dates. I did miss a detail or two. And our fundraisers. The public art dedication for Eagle Point Rec. Center, the rotating art exhibit. We are looking at a new art project for Pioneer Park. Still haven't made a decision on that. Colorado Nonprofit Conference is coming up. I'm really looking forward to going to that. And then the Fall/Winter Art Show. And we have been looking at sponsorships with local businesses, and that is really paying off. And we're also looking at writing a new Arts and Culture Master Plan as sort of an echo of what Adams County recently completed. I sat on the steering committee for that. I was very impressed with what they were doing, and there was a lot that I felt I could bring back to Commerce City to kind of round out our offerings for the people of this area. Challenges, we're in all-volunteer board, and time commitment can be overwhelming. Once in a while, we've had short meetings because people have other commitments. Board turnover. We are faced with trying to build and retain knowledge and experience, record-keeping with tax filings, nonprofit status, documents for grants and applications and reports. All of this has to be kept up with, and that goes back to knowledge and experience again. Grant sponsorships and fundraising. About half of our budget comes from these sources, and we have been working to expand those. And this year, as a result of having been writing grants for the Cultural Council for two years, I'm expanding my interest in nonprofit management, and I hope to apply some of that to this area. Why arts and culture? This is from the survey questions. How important is it to have arts, music, and cultural offerings in Commerce City? Very important, somewhat important, or not important at all? Well, the green columns are the very important, and the yellow columns are the somewhat. Nobody voted for not important, so it seems to be a big issue. City comparisons. This is what Aurora, Greenwood Village, Brighton, Thornton, and Broomfield all invest in their cultural and art programs. You have this in your package, so you can look at it on your own. But all these cities are investing bigly in what they are doing in providing cultural activities and points of coming together for their citizens. Potential future opportunities. Transition to more of an advisory board, which is in process. Closer partnerships with local artists and musicians. Additional grant funding opportunities, such as National Endowment for the Arts, SCFD Public Art Matching Funds, and others, and we are still exploring that. Expanded arts and cultural events, things like Derby Days, some kind of cultural fest. I keep bringing up a Harvest Festival I'd like to see. Arts community events. Ongoing public art installations beyond 2K, art and cultural master plan in partnership with the city. And looking at how we can better align and collaborate with the city and other organizations within it to meet the needs of our citizens. Groups like the Boys and Girls Club. And who knows? We're still looking into what's out there. Questions and discussion. We appreciate having you attend the events we sponsor. It's just really helped a lot. Thank you for the ongoing support. Thank you for appointing us and trusting us to do this work for Commerce City. Thank you to Crystal and Jose for their leadership and their commitment to see this city thrive. Thank you for supporting us financially each year and allowing us to use space for storage at the historical and cultural center. Thank you all very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Does anyone on council have any questions for Mr. Hanson or the Cultural Council?
I don't have the board, so you have to raise your hand if you do.
Oh.
I guess I don't have to put my light on.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Councilman Hughesman. Thank you so much for your presentation. And there is a lot of work that is done within this council. And again, a volunteer council with a lot of hats to wear at any given time. So, thank you so much for the presentation and for the detailed information. I think that what we're looking at is... Because we've talked about this of partnerships, and in fact, you and I just talked briefly, Adam City High School had approached or had sent me an email in regards to their mariachi group and would like to partner with Commerce City Cultural Council. So this is another way to expand the culture in our city with partnerships with large groups, with the school district and others that we've talked about in previous presentations. But again, just wanted to thank you so much for the information, and I truly enjoy serving on the Cultural Council. I've been on now for six and a half years, and it's really grown from when I first started in 2011, where we started off with two concerts in the park, and now we have four, two in the northern part of the city and two in the southern. So I just want to give kudos to the council on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. I wanted to point out, the members on our council are full-time involved individuals that have lives outside of the Cultural Council, and they take the time to come join us, not because they have to, but because they believe in what they're doing. They believe in Commerce City, and they believe in bringing a better lifestyle to the people that live here. And I so appreciate their efforts and the time that they give. And also, we have been talking about adding students from the high school to our board during the school year to develop a better connection and collaboration with the school districts. I hope to flush that out a little better this coming year. Thank you all so much.
I have a couple of comments. I know I was in and out, but I have to thank the Cultural Council and all you guys do for our community. The amount of compliments, and I know tonight we heard about some of the things we didn't have at our rec. center. But I will tell you, one of the things we do have at Bison Ridge that I'm really impressed with, and we will have some at Eagle Point, everybody's complimenting the Buffalo. Outstanding job with the art, both in the roundabout, the Buffalo, and inside. And I'm glad we have the dedicated funding to be able to do art throughout our community. I was impressed when the kites went up over at Pioneer Park. But to see that kind of art that we've never had in our community, to start seeing that every time something changes, we're starting to see more art. It goes to the credit of those of you that serve on the Cultural Council. And I know Crystal is on the Cultural Council. Who's the other council member? Jose Guardiola. The things that were... You know, we've had a Cultural Council for years, but now we're starting to see some really big gains with art in our community. So, thank you very much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. One more thing. This year, we started, or this last year, we started looking at art wraps on traffic boxes. And if you haven't seen it, drive by Seventy Second and Monaco in front of Lester Arnold High School, and you will see the very first one in Commerce City. It's called Veggies.
Okay.
And we hope to do a lot more. They're not very expensive, but they're good for 20 years, and they're easy to clean off if there's graffiti or damage. So this will be part of our offerings, hopefully.
Great. Thanks again.
Thank you all again.
Okay, on to administrative council business. Does anybody have any business to address? I know we do have a letter here that we need to address, but Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to note, we need a correction on the ZIP code because it's listed as 80621, should be 80022.
On the letter?
On the Adams 14 Board of Education draft.
Thank you. Yes, you're right, 80022. So let's take up the letter first. Staff did their best shot at trying to get the point across without crossing a line. But it's the council's decision on whether they want to amend this letter or if they want me to sign the letter the way it is. And if you want to amend it, what would you amend it to? Now is the opportunity to do so. On the letter, Mr. Guardiola.
Yeah, I'd like to amend it. I'm not too fond of the letter. I think we're not really reaching... Given them our point of view, I know we discussed many things at our study session, and it's just a really generic letter that's saying, "Uh, we're going to do what we can." But I'm not a fan of the letter. I would like to see staff come back with some stronger points. And that's just my opinion.
We're happy to pull the letter up on the screen and take your feedback and walk through it here.
Yeah, whatever we need to do.
Happy to do that.
If you have some amendments that you want to propose...
I, I don't, because I just saw the letter. I'd like to have some more time to look into it, or, but I think, I mean, you guys were at the study session, and there's some very passionate and good feeling, feelings about what we really wanted, and I don't think you grafted.
Well, that was a challenge. There was a, a lot of discussion last Monday night, a lot of different points of view shared. So hard to capture that in one letter that sort of has the consensus of council. That's why we thought we would just bring it in draft form, have it up on the screen here, and just take whatever comments you have for how you'd like us to amend it. We can also try to make amendments, but certainly more feedback from council would be really helpful.
Let me go to Councilwoman Elliott on the letter.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a good starting point, and given the light of the situation and the turn of events that have happened in the last week, I think we need to really consider what wording we use. We don't want to be so aggressive, but in the same token, I understand Councilman Wadiola's concerns as well, because there was a lot of passionate conversations and, and topics that were brought up. So I would just want to keep that in consideration and maybe hold off on sending the letter maybe another week or two, or whatever that looks like. Thank you.
Okay. You want to put that in the form of a motion to hold off, have them do some more work on it, and then we'll be able to see a second draft? Mr. Wadiola?
And, and I agree with you, but I think we have to also let them know that we're looking into different things that we discussed in that meeting. There's three other options about policy, meetings with the commissioner, because I think a lot of our residents are looking up to us to see what we're going to do, and by the last phrase of, to that end, council members are committed to advocating as residents, and I agree with that, but it's kind of being a cop-out, and, and our, our residents are going to say, wow, okay, thank you, but no, thank you. And just because we hold a different position in our community, I, I, I would echo what Councilwoman Elliott says, maybe take a week or two to come back with another letter that is just, I mean, there's a lot of things that we discussed that we're moving forward, how we're going to do HB 1355, the policy, the meetings. I think that has to go into a letter, so they know that we are still going to be looking into it as a, as, as a body. I mean, but we're advocating as residents.
Sure. We can absolutely do that.
Okay, Mr. Hughesman?
I'm going to echo the two previous council members that have spoken and, and share that. I think that this is the wrong place and time to throw it up on the board and start working on edits. I think that's better served in a study session, so I make a motion that this be tabled until the June 25th study session. We add that to the agenda, and we work on edits there in private where it should be.
Okay. Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. And to that, you know, we also do have a meeting scheduled this month, I believe, the 5th, or no, is it, no, it's July, excuse me, in July. So while I respect the suggestions of my colleagues here as far as discussing this in a study session, I, I still feel somewhat hesitant to throw out those discussions as far as with our state legislation, and, I mean, we want to, we want to obviously make them aware that we're looking into this, but I think with what the public views is what we're able to do and what we're not able to do, I think they would respect that. But I think, again, I just think we need to consider what type of verbiage and, and what, what message we want to convey without coming across as threatening in the, in the event that we'll be having a meeting at the end of July.
I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Mr. Wadiola?
I'll second.
All right. Now discussion, Madera?
I was just going to second that, but, you know, I, I do think that we need to have more discussion on this. You know, my colleagues make excellent points. We can't come across as threatening, but, you know, have to come across more as, you know, coming together as a community and helping each other, but in order to do that, we need their help and support in the school system, because we are one community. You know, the schools are just a bigger part of Commerce City as Commerce City is a part of the schools. So to that effect, I think we definitely need to work through this draft, and the study session is the best place to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Wadiola?
And, and can we pull it up at the study session and actually just craft out the, the letters when we're discussing that?
We can absolutely do that, but you've provided some good feedback tonight. We'll revise it based on the feedback tonight and have that updated, updated draft for you. We won't include it in the packet, but we'll have it ready at the end of the meeting next Monday to review on the screen with you.
Still in discussion, I think it's important that the folks that are watching at home and the people that may see this after, you know, a later date on Channel 8, that they need to know, first of all, there's boundaries between our government office and what we're capable of doing and the government office of the school district. However, as Mr. Madera stated, this is all part of one community, and it's not, it's not that, we're not just want to be helpful of the school district, we want to be helpful of the residents getting the education that their kids deserve. There's, there's two different facets right now over at the district, and it's the residents and the administrative side of it, and the frustrations that are wedged in between. I think we need to make it really clear that it's about us being able to make sure that there's a good quality education for the kids in this community, and our hands are really tied from the perspective of the government agency that we operate and the government agency that the board operates. However, we need to look at all different venues of education. It's not just limited to public schools. If, if it has to be alternative schools, what are the other ones I'm thinking of? Charters? I mean, there's a whole lot of different options, and I'm not trying to undermine District 14 for crying out loud. Most of us up here went to that, that district and graduated from that district. We just want to see a good quality education option for the residents of our community. And it's, it's tough to watch good quality folks that grew up in that district, that worked for that district to, to not be able to be, able to be employed there. And if it was one or two, and there were personnel issues, we should stay out of it. But there is some major frustrations in this community, what's happening with the district, and I, I want to make it clear, I'm there to help the board fix the problem. I'm there, I'm there to help the community fix the problem, but I just have to stay within the bounds of my government authority as the mayor, and I would imagine the rest of the council feels the same way as their official position. But as residents of this community, we want to be an advocate for good quality education for the residents within our community, and a lot of folks just saw us bring up the map and seen the, the amount of homes that's supposed to start getting built next year at the dog track site. We want the future residents to have that same opportunity for quality education. It makes it really hard for us to do our job and grow our community and encourage new developments in, within a district that's having the struggles that this district's having, and, and we need to come together as, as a whole, not just the residents and the board and the, and, and the city council, but all the entities within the, within the community to try to improve the opportunity for economic vitality, for good quality education for the kids. It's not, it's, it's not just let's beat up the board of directors at the school district. It's about how do we create a better opportunity for the residents within our community for education, and, and that also brings added vitality to those other things that I mentioned. But, so I, I, I had to say, we're not just trying to stick it to the board of directors. We're trying to make sure that the residents are heard and we can fix the problem that has been many, many years ongoing. It, it's just cyclical, and, and that's what we're trying to get to as a letter, is to look at what are our options, and we're willing to meet and, and planning to meet with state, the state school board folks and, and the representatives, our, the senate and house of here Colorado's senators and representatives. Whatever we can do to promote quality education in this, in this city and, and school district 14, I think this council is committed to move forward in the best way that we can within our legal rights as a body and as our legal rights as residents. All right. Any other discussion before I move on? Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to add to that, and I mentioned this last week in the study session, and for those that may be at home watching, is that we have continually made efforts. Again, it's not one-sided. We have been meeting on a regular basis, so I just want it, for the record, that we are concerned. We have been concerned for quite some time, and that we will continue to have these discussions and offer the olive branch, as you will, to, to have these discussions and try to, to work through these, these issues to, to help our community.
Seeing no more discussions, I have a motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. All right. Motion is approved. It's not that late, Mr. Hughesman. All right. Any other administrative council business come before the city council, Commerce City this evening? Mr. Hughesman?
Thank you. I have two items I'd like to discuss. The first one, I took a nice little trip to Tulsa, Oklahoma, not this last week, but the week before, and although it's not a very scenic place, there's one thing that stood out to me is a program they have down there called Up With Trees, and it seemed like every road I drove on was trees planted with the sign in front of it says Up With Trees, and had a business name or had some kind of organization or in memory of, or something like that. So I did some research on the organization that does that, and they were formed in 1976. They've planned, planted over 30,000 trees in the greater Tulsa area and trying to make the urban forestry kind of a little bit more beautified, and I thought, what a great program that could be for Commerce City if we could get local businesses and organizations to sponsor planting of a tree, their name and a sign out there. So I was wondering if we could get support to maybe have staff look into adopting a program similar to that to try to help out our own urban forest. That's the first one, so we can discuss that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea as well. Thank you for bringing it forward. I know you can have staff look into that and see if they can find some information on it and how it would benefit us. Go ahead.
Right. So number two, I think most of us received emails from Mr. Leagann regarding the odors from his neighbors, and I know we talked about it before tonight's meeting, just wanted to get clarification that Mr. Buckley had reached out to the owner who had emailed us and that we'll be following up, and if we could get follow-up to us as a council as far as what actions are on the table, what's being discussed, and also any pertinent details of the conversation between Mr. Buckley and the owner of that establishment.
We can certainly do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hughesman. I'm glad you brought that up. I have received several emails from Mr. Lee as well. I've been passing them on to the city attorney and the city manager's office. I know that we've had code enforcement out there, and, and we've been having conversations with, not, not me as the mayor, but the staff, conversations with the business, and it comes down to trying to put together evidence of, of, of an issue.
Could explain where a license of issued by the city is involved. Action on that license would be referred to the city's marijuana licensing authority. And so the first step in that is establishing a case and determining whether there's grounds to submit a request for a show cause hearing, and that would be, once that evidence is received, the step that my office would take before taking it to the hearing officer to determine what the appropriate action would be.
And so I, I'm glad you stated that, because that's exactly where I was going. I think it's important that the council knows what the process is, and it doesn't come before this council. We're not the ones that go in and pit neighbor against neighbor, but we do have laws that need to be followed, and if, if someone's violating something and they have a license, then it's the process that we have in place to go through the city attorney's office and have the, the licensing authority be the ones to determine if there was a violation. So if, if he reaches out to you all, you can explain that, but I think it's a great representation that was brought up tonight, and if he reaches out to anybody, you can make sure that you, you're more than welcome to let him know that, that the staff's taking care of it, and there's a process, and to be in, in, in close contact with Roger Tinklinberg. He's not even paying attention. I'm throwing him under the bus. Go ahead, Mr. Hughesman.
I, I just want to add, one of the greatest frustrations that the owner has is that he feels that his concerns are falling on deaf ears. So if we can just follow up, whether, you know, it's, it's just a status update of, hey, I have nothing for you right now, but just want to let you know we're still working the issue, please just reach out to him and make sure that his concerns have not fallen on deaf ears.
We will certainly do that. Again, Mr. Buckley spoke with him today. It's my understanding the neighborhood services staff has been speaking with him over the last several months, but we can provide additional information to city council on the status of assembling that evidence that Mr. Sheasley was speaking of that would prompt the show cause hearing. I'm, I would assume that information in terms of the process has been shared with the adjacent business owner, but I'll make sure that it, that it has.
All right. Any other administrative council business come before us today? Seeing none, get into reports. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute the city manager update last week. It did include tonight's oil and gas update as promised on May 21st. We are providing weekly updates of new permit activity, but we'll also do it publicly at the second regular meeting of the month, so that, tonight's presentation was included in the city manager update. Mr. Kramer here is, is here to walk through the information with you. It'll focus on what's changed in terms of permit activity since the last update on May 21st.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. So since May 21st, again, as, as Mr. McBroom mentioned, we are going to be doing this on the third Monday of every month, and the presentation portion of this is primarily focused on the updates to activities. I did go ahead and include the, the background slides as, as after the question slide for council's reference in the future. There was a, a lot of good basic oil and gas 101 information in there, so we will probably continue to include that in every single one of these moving forward, just for reference To clarify, the city still has not received an oil and gas permit for, for a city permit. While there's a lot of state COGCC activity thus far, no operator has submitted anything to the city. The big news since we talked on May 21st has actually been the submittal, and you can see at the bottom here, new spacing application, a new two, Form 2. If you recall, those are the individual well permits. There are 36 wells associated with this new one, and then finally a 2A, all by Great Western. The, the site name they provided was called Jacobson. It's for 36 wells on a single well pad site, and just to update council on where that is, it is located here between I-76 and State Highway 2. It's no longer State Highway 2, but the former State Highway 2. Council may remember there's a previous spacing application for this area from extraction. There is now one for Jacobson as well. You know, at a staff level, we're still trying to understand how the state works with these, somewhat what appeared to us to be competing interests. You know, when we process zoning applications, for example, we don't get multiple people applying to zone the same property, so it was, we're still trying to kind of get a good feel for this, and Special Counsel Matt Surr has been able to really help us understand this, and, and there might be a process whereby they are both pursuing this at a state level.
So Chris, let me have you expand on that a little bit. It appears that both companies are looking to essentially mine the same subsurface area?
They're both attempting to get permits to do that. It's my understanding, though, that only one of them will emerge from the COGCC process with the ability to do that. Were they actually applying to do it different formations, at different depths? There may be that possibility, but it's our understanding that they are applying to do it in the same formation. So knowing that that permit was submitted, or those series of permits were submitted to the state, I've got a slide here about a lot of the activities that we've done at a staff level since the last one. You can see, obviously, we met with extraction just for council's benefit. We're meeting with them weekly in an effort to better understand what they hope to do so that we can talk to them about, about best management practices, potentially surface locations for well pad sites, et cetera. But we also, and, and since this update was put together for Wednesday's report, since then, we also met with Great Western, and it was a really sort of a kickoff meeting where we were, again, we had no notice that they were going to be submitting any of this to the state. they were gonna be submitting any of this to the state at this particular location, so we met with them in an effort to begin those conversations that will be similar in nature to those that we've had with Extraction, staff also had the opportunity to tour some sites in person that were at different stages of the development process, very helpful, it's, 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 it's obviously, there's a, it's a big field, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of elements to it, so it was very helpful for us to start to get a good handle on, on what's happening at the different phases, and it's always different to see it in person than it is on paper, we also met with the Adams County LGD, Christine Doherty, as council may or may not be aware, there are some activities being proposed going back to the map, there are some activities being proposed in unincorporated Adams County, but that are in the city's growth area, and so obviously, we want to set up a good working relationship with Adams County so that their LGD can submit comments that we send to them on our behalf when they're located in the county, and it was a very fruitful meeting, you know, they've, they've in some ways been dealing with this surge of activity a little bit longer, they've had a couple of years head start on us, so it was very helpful, and I think we've set up some real good communication processes already through that. We also submit a, submitted a comment letter to the COGCC, that was in your packet last week, regarding the Antelope 2A, just to go back to the map, the Antelope 2A is the one in the green on the far left, we submitted a comment letter as a failsafe, we are still assuming we get a second comment period on that after we go through some discussions with Petro, however, we had not received confirmation at that point from the COGCC that we would get that, so we submitted that comment letter just to be sure, and in that we objected to the location of the well pad site, however, we, is our hope that we still continue to have conversations with Petro about best management practices, ideal or better well pad site placement, hopefully in more industrial areas, et cetera, so while we did submit that letter, our hope is that's not, that's not the end of that story. We also were working on refining our council engagement process, tonight is another example of that, we met with council to go over some of that, wow, last week, that seems like a lot longer, but that was last week, and then obviously, we're continuing to work on that, we're continuing to work on the website, we're continuing to update a lot of those processes, that's one thing that actually Adams County told us, was that they are about two and a half years in, and they are still refining their processes to, you know, adapt to this as it relates to the ongoing processes, so internally, I can tell council that we are working hard at doing a lot of analysis, trying to create, identify criteria that are beneficial for Commerce City residents and businesses that help protect them, that we can use in conversations with operators to better ensure that a lot of these are located in ways that minimize impacts to residents, so we're doing a lot of GIS analysis, that's geographic information systems, it's a computer system, we're doing that kind of analysis in an effort to be better informed with these operators as we're talking to them, it is coming very fast, and we were having a lot of sudden activity, but as you can see from this update, hopefully, we are hitting this from multiple angles, we aren't resting on just communication with the COGCC or just communication with the county, we are attempting to work at this both internally, externally, with operators and with other jurisdictions, so with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Madera?
Yes, if I'm not mistaken, that proposed Jacobson pad is right near our new rec center and one of our busiest corridors?
It is actually in between, it's on the other side of State Highway 2 and the canal there from, from the rec center, so the rec center being located in this general area, so, I mean, it depends, depending on what anyone wants to call near, a lot of this is, you know, near all sorts of things, but from a, it's not across the street or adjacent.
How far is it in feet?
It's, it's over a thousand feet, I don't know the exact distance off the top of my head, but I know that it's over a thousand feet.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, thank you for the presentation. Is there any additional administrative council business from the council this evening? Mr. Guardiola.
I had a question about the Kearney presentation, and what's the next steps on that? Cause these kids were tired on just doing it, and are we gonna respond to them, or how are we gonna respond to them?
I believe that was routed to the police department, so the idea is to initially begin with summarizing the work the police department, the communication the police department has had with the administration at the middle school there, in addition, Public Works will begin doing some analysis of the traffic calming measures that were proposed by the students, so it'll take some time, but, but a good point for us is to communicate back, well, what are we doing, how long do we think that'll take, when should they expect to hear back from us, I'll make sure that we're doing that.
And if you could just update us too, Mr. McBroom?
For sure.
Thank you.
All right, continuing with Brian's report, Mr. Hughesman.
I'm confused about when the city manager report goes out now, it seems like I'm getting it on Wednesday for the next week, whereas before, we got it on Monday, so can I get an explanation as when I should expect to see it? Thank you.
The intent is to send it Wednesday, Thursday of every week? So essentially, what we're doing is collecting items in the early part of a given week and sending it out Wednesday, Thursday of that week, we started by sending it out the week that we would normally skip a city manager report on the Memorial Day Monday, we started sending a report that following Wednesday, so we're sending it, so whether it's the prior week's report or the next week's report, what we do is collect updates largely to council action items, and when we're ready, they get included in the city manager update, if that makes sense.
So the upside to that is people are getting the city manager's report earlier, the downside to it is if something happens, after the report comes out on Wednesday, Thursday, if it's Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, it won't be in until the following report, that's the downside, correct?
And it was, we did start publishing it earlier in the week, earlier the week prior at Mr. Guardiola's request to give you some additional time to review the report before I cover it on Monday evening, so the cutoff date for what we include in the report is just changed because we're publishing it on a different day of the week, does that, does that help you? Yeah, that was, I think it came up in a study session, I think it was Mr. Guardiola who brought that up, and we were able to accommodate that and start publishing it earlier.
I will, just wanted to inform my colleagues that when I worked for the city of Aurora, we would send out the city manager report on Friday morning, and then if there were any updates in between Friday and Monday evening, staff would normally send out anything if it was, you know, detrimental or anything that needed to be discussed at that evening.
I thought I'd seen where the report was gonna come to council first, like three days ahead of time to give them opportunity to provide input and then go out to the public, but I was seeing both of them going out on the same day, so that led to my confusion.
My understanding was a desire to see us publish it sooner, if it's the request of council that we send it to council first before we post it on the website, we'd be happy to do that, too.
All right, anything else for your report, Brian? That's it, all right, city attorney?
I have nothing to report this evening.
All right, now we're down to the mayor, I'm gonna keep my report short, did have a loss in the family, so I won't be spending as much time up at CML this week, I will be up there tomorrow and back here Wednesday, so you guys will see me for a little while at CML, I did go to Rotary, we had the Rotary Trap Shoot, thank you to the council members that participated, went to a Good Cause, scholarships for District 14 and the SHU program that we do and a lot of other things, I wanna give kudos to the staff for the neighborhood outreach, most of us were there, it was, it looks like it was, it ended up being a good evening, there was a threat of rain, but didn't happen, and so seemed like everybody was enjoying themselves and good information was given out, so thank you to the staff, all the folks from all the departments that were there, to Grille, the parks employees, I mean, it takes a lot of work to put that on, so thank you to the staff, and then I did have a couple of meetings with some folks that are doing additional development up around 104th and Chambers, maybe submitting a change to their, to their comp plan for the area around 711, I encouraged them to create more opportunities for sit-down restaurants for all of, you know, I think it's important that you guys know that I said, oh yeah, well, you might be able to do some of those things, but you need to come in with some sit-down restaurants, so I keep pounding that as, as often as I can, but I'm gonna leave my report there, other, other than, just for the folks at home and the folks that'll see this later on, 4th of July is coming up, and wanna make sure everybody's safe, please, please follow the law, enjoy the fireworks display that the city puts on with conjunction with the Rapid Stadium, and if you need to go out and light off fireworks, try to do it somewhere else, cause if you do it in the city limits with the new fines, it could be extremely costly, so, thank you. Is there anyone who has anything they wanna add to my report before I end this meeting? All right, there be no further business to come before the city council of Commerce City, it's 9:49 PM, we are adjourned. Thank you.